Okay, it's seven o'clock. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. I guess we'll let that piggyback in.
Do we have to?
You said it, it's on the recording. Um, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight, so let's move right ahead. First up, number twenty-two, twenty-two-two-three petition of Robert Carrero for renewal of a special permit under sections three point two point one seven and five point two point seven to operate the insurance business and maintain professional office space with signage at twenty-seven North Main Street, which is in a business G district. Mr. Carrero, welcome back again.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak for yourself, sir?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak for yourself, sir?
Yes, five-year period is about to expire on my current permit, and we're requesting a renewal of that permit. And it's, uh, as we sit here, my business is as usual. Uh, the insurance office continues to occupy the first floor of twenty-seven North Main Street. And as you know, it's the oldest insurance agency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we'd love to continue. We have three long-term employees there, and we just have essentially a small family. Uh, and we write a significant percentage of the, our business in the town of Sherburne. Uh, our current tenants are a, a college testing and tutoring company, um, a high, high-tech information services company, and an administrative office for a, an automobile sales company. Um, if there are any other questions, needless to say, I could answer them. With respect to the signs, our permanent ground signs are as usual and have been in place for quite a long period of time, going back, I think, into the nineties. Um, both the permanent ground sign and affixing to the building, the permanent building signs uh, in accordance with the rules and regulations. Um, changing them out every once in a while when we change a tenant. But everything is consistent with, uh, the bylaws, and we request a renewal of our permit.
Okay, and if I hear you correctly, everything is the same, except maybe some of your tenants have changed. Your sign's the same, your operation's the same, the buildings, your building's the same, and you just want a straight renewal for five years?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, anybody here from the public to comment on, uh, this petition? Once, or twice? Okay, nobody. Comments from the board on the petition?
No, none.
None from me?
Okay.
No, thanks.
All right, I'd like to make a motion then that the petition, uh, for renewal of a special permit under sections three point two point one seven and five point two point seven to operate insurance business, maintain professional office space with signage at twenty-seven North Main Street, be granted on the same terms and conditions as the prior permit. Um, and for an additional five-year term. That's my motion.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor, I, we have to do it by roll call, no back votes, I.
Step it guy.
Fitch, I.
All right, Mr. Carrero, thank you for your time, your permit's granted, have a great evening.
And thank you, you also.
All right. Next up, petition number two zero two-two-four, petition of Stuart Smith for renewal of a special permit under section three point two point five to operate a landscape business at twenty-nine Coolidge Street, which is in a residence A district. Uh, Mr. Smith, I saw you here a moment ago, there you are, you just moved around on the screen.
Here I am.
All right, and do you wish to speak for the petitioner, sir?
Uh, certainly, I am the petitioner, uh, I've run Samwell Landscaping for, oh god, thirty-six years, thirty-three years here at twenty-nine Coolidge Street. Uh, I'd like a renewal of a five-year permit to run a landscaping business. Nothing has changed, uh, we don't have a sign, we have a sign that says Iron Horse Farm, which is the name of the farm. Um, and, um, I have a couple of employee, I have three employees right now, and, uh, pretty much their cars stay on the other side of the barn, and, um, the guys come in in the morning, pick up the trucks and leave, and, and we try to keep the noise and aggravation, everybody down with a dull roar.
Has the number of employees changed, sir?
No, well, probably one less.
Um, genie, does this existing permit have a limit on number of employees? I'm just trying to look.
I don't believe they do.
Three, two, five.
They're not working, they're not working on the premises, are they?
No.
No, yeah, yeah, okay.
Pick up a truck.
There may be a limit for those who are working on the premises, but...
Right, right, so they, they come, they pick up a truck, they go do their business, but they don't hang around at your place?
No.
All right, so you, sir, are seeking a straight renewal, five years, same terms and conditions as your last permit? Nothing more?
Nothing more.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody from the public here to comment on this one? Hearing none, I'm waiting for Mr. Luskin's dog to speak up, but I'd probably be disappointed about that. Um, nice-looking dog, sir.
Very intelligent, but...
Um, okay, um, hearing no comments from the, from the public. Um, board members, comments, questions?
None for me, no.
No.
All right, um, none for me, uh, I'd like to make a motion then that, um, we renew the special permit of Stuart Smith for, uh, operate a landscape business at twenty-nine Coolidge Street in a residence A district pursuant to section three point two point five, under all the same terms and conditions as his last permit, but for an additional five-year term, that's my motion.
I second that.
All right, uh, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, have to go by roll call, no back votes, I.
Step it guy.
Fitch, I.
Okay, Skip, you're set.
Thank you. Thank you very much, you guys, gentlemen, have a pleasant evening.
You as well. All right.
Bye, genie.
Next up.
Bye, Skip.
Next up, petition number twenty-two oh-two-five, petition of Ninting Ni and Gujung Chen, if I'm saying it correctly, for a special permit under three point two point two for an accessory apartment at one hundred fifteen Maple Street, which is in a residence B district. Is there anyone here to speak for the petitioner?
Um, I know Net Ting is on, he just is muted.
Oh, okay.
Net Ting, can you unmute?
Can't do it from here, can we?
Uh, I cannot. I just asked him to unmute, I don't know whether it's gonna...
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Hello.
Hi, there you are.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for helping.
No, no, no problem, I tell us about, uh, your petition and what you want to do, it sounds like it's for an accessory apartment.
Uh, it's like, basically, uh, it's a in-law suite for my mother-in-law. And, uh, we like to create a little bit, uh, you know, uh, I would say independent environment for her, and make her happier, and then make us happier in both way, and, uh, also like, you know, uh, essentially, it's a, it's a, it's a suite, we've come with a bathroom and a very small, like, uh, uh, I would say, uh, like, uh, you know, hmm, some storage area and bathroom, bathroom, one, what else? What else I got, and, uh, maybe a small kitchen area, that's pretty much it.
Okay, do you have a, a plan for it, sir?
Yes, I do, I actually hired an architect, uh, did a drawing for us, actually, uh, last year, we already get out some pre-approval from the town.
Okay, um, do you have that plan, um, with you, or has the building inspector, Mr. Kenny, seen the plan?
Yes, I guess, I guess, at, at that time, everybody see the plan, and, uh, it's basically from our understanding at the last moment, uh, it's a, basically, it's a yes.
Okay, um, well, there are a couple of different boards that, that, that have to speak on these, and, and they're usually granted, I'm just trying to make sure we've touched all the bases and done it correctly. Um, but, um, the space has to otherwise be legal. Um, so, uh, is it inside your existing house that you're gonna build this, you're gonna build an addition, an addition or what?
It's connected with my main house.
Okay, is it connected with your main house now, is it already built?
No, it's not a build, not built yet.
It's going to be built, got it.
We just designed that, and we also have, uh, we also hired a contractor going to like, uh, carry out the plan for us.
Okay, and did Mr. Kenny, the zoning enforcement officer, conclude that, uh, the plan otherwise met uh, the zoning bylaw, you're within the setbacks, you're the right distance from your neighbors, that sort of thing?
Hmm. Yes, I guess, uh, from that, you know, at least from our initial preliminary approval, seems like everything follow the code, follow the regulation.
Okay, genie, you had something to say?
Hmm.
Hang on for just a moment, let me...
I wanted to say that, um, the, the building permit application is in the system. Um, the Board of Health has already approved it. We, I think Chris is waiting for this to happen before he could actually approve the building permit.
Okay, that's very helpful, and, and was the, uh, uh, so the plan showed a unit under twelve hundred square feet, uh, that the zoning enforcement officer otherwise agreed, met all the zoning bylaw requirements, except for the fact that it was an additional dwelling unit.
Right, and I did, I sent you the plans.
Okay.
When I sent you everything.
All right, I guess I must have them here, hold on, not denying it.
I think I sent it, uh, last Wednesday or Thursday.
I think here they are, that's right, okay, okay. Thank you, nope, I've got them right here. Stand corrected, okay. All right, so sir, you want what we call sort of the regular additional dwelling unit permit, special permit?
Hmm.
Uh, that, or what do you get, for?
For yours?
Um, and, uh, is that essentially your request?
Uh, I guess so, I guess so. Yeah, I'm not a very...
The application says.
Yeah, my knowledge only is very limited.
Okay.
It's, it's the apartment at three point two point two.
Right.
Isn't it basically that, uh?
Right.
Apartment.
Right, okay, and the plans are dated, having trouble reading the plans on them, but they're just a set of registered architect plans, okay, well, we'll say the plan submitted to the board, because we have them, that, that, so long as they build that, it should be okay. All right, are there comments, uh, from any member of the public on this petition? Going once, going twice? Okay, hearing none. Comments, uh, from members of the board?
Yeah, I, I have a question, it's not clear to me.
Okay.
What portion of the house is actually the apartment? And what is, I guess, your residence?
Hmm, I guess right now, we have, uh, basically, right now, we got, uh, let me think, uh, we got a, uh, four, essentially four bathroom, and, uh, after building, we still keep four bathroom, the reason being, we're going to combine one bathroom into a, uh, a, a spatial one, a big one, with a walk-in closet and everything, so that's why we still actually keep like the four bathroom. Uh, one is on the stair for my mother-in-law to avoid walking on the stairs, you know, it's kind of challenge.
Her, her space would be on level one?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Okay. So I see, I see what looked like two different kitchens on level one, so I assume the bigger kitchen would be your kitchen and the smaller one is her? So her space is basically confined to that area, uh, that is off the entryway. And, uh, there's basically this, what looks like, uh, kitchen counters, and then a, uh, a smaller, uh, bathroom.
Yes.
And then that whole area between this kitchen and the bathroom, that's all living area for her?
Yes, 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 of course, like, uh, you know, it's not unlimited over there, and just, uh, in case she needed that, have her own, like, spatial.
So it's not, it's not really fully separated?
It's not, it's not, actually, it's quite connected, actually, we share the same entrance, just, uh, you know, once, uh, she closed the door, and, uh, we have two, you know, uh, independent environment, I would say, uh, put it in that way.
So, i- in a way, it's, uh, it's a little bit different than the actual, the way that section is written in the zoning by, the way it's written in the zoning bylaw, is that it's kind of a separate unit.
Right.
So this is really pretty much integrated into your house. You haven't increased the number of bedrooms in your house, right?
No, 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 not at all, yeah.
Okay, so...
So the case is simpler or complex?
I don't really see it as a problem, I just see it as not really within the definition of the section of the bylaw, that's all.
Mr. Fitch?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, to the petitioner, assuming we make one of our, assuming we want to grant this, and assuming we make one of our conditions, that you provide, uh, the zoning enforcement officer with one of those plans, I don't think you have to have a new plan drawn, but one of those plans showing the boundaries of where the accessory unit be- begins and ends, just so it's clear in our records, because ten years from now, might not be your mother-in-law in there, it might be somebody else, and we need to know what, what's the accessory unit, what's the main unit?
Absolutely, absolutely, I, I think we did some, basically, uh, uh, measurement, and, and we have official document in terms like, uh, the land inspection area things.
Uh, right, it, it's probably fine, uh, but, but I'm just gonna make sure that it's, it's clear in our records where one begins and the other ends, and then, then you can all live happily ever after together. You don't have to change anything.
Okay.
Well, and how happily you live together is up to your family. We're, we're only in charge of zoning. Okay. Mr. Fitch?
Yes, Ron, I'd be interested in why I think this unit does not exactly, uh, square with the provisions of three point two?
Uh, or three point two?
I think what Ron was saying is, you sort of need to know where the unit is. Where the main house is and where the unit is, and I was trying to respond to that with my request, that, that one of the plans be marked up that way, just so it would be in our records.
Yeah, that, that would, I think that would, that would really, uh, help define it for me.
Okay.
Having trouble finding it in the bylaw.
Right.
I, I think one of the conditions that Chris was saying, that it's got, if it's gonna be a separate in-law suite, he has to have two means of egress.
Right.
So he has one, and, and, but that's part of the condition, and, and, uh, Chris is gonna work with him, with Netting.
All right, other questions from the board members? All right, um, let me take a shot at a motion, then you guys can throw rocks at it. Um, I would move that, or bricks, whatever. Um, uh, I, I move that the petition be granted with the following conditions, that the unit be built according to the plans already on record with the, uh, count of Sherburne. There's only enforcement officer, and there are plans by plans by OJ LLC, O-J-E-L-L-C, through the plans. Um, so that's one condition, it'd be built in accordance with those plans, a second is that the conditions imposed by the Board of Health for the septic system in their March fourth meeting be observed. Uh, third condition, that the plans be marked to the reasonable satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer to show the boundaries of the additional dwelling unit. And, I'm up to fourth or fifth, whatever, next, um, that the, uh, you to comply with all other applicable building access egress codes. Um, so that when you're working with, uh, Mr. Kenny, you can just mark those on the plan, just so he knows, okay, here's the second exit, here's how you get in, here's how you get out, it's under twelve hundred square feet. It's just making sure that we've documented that it's all been done properly.
Absolutely, absolutely, I will definitely convey, uh, 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 the point to my wife, because uh, she's the one, uh, in the, uh, email loop all the time, I'm just temporary.
Okay, it's all right, you're doing a great job, well done.
Thank you.
And, uh, uh, and I, and I guess I'd add two more conditions, genie, one is that it otherwise complete the operation, the unit otherwise comply with all the other requirements, three point two point two. Um, and that it's for a period of four years. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, wise commentary?
No.
All right, all, all in favor, I, we have to do it by roll call.
My wife's here, so, uh, she's...
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
How are you? Perfect.
All right, we're just, we're just about to vote on your permit.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Um, uh, we have to do it by roll call, no back eye.
Step it guy.
Fitch, I.
All right, you got it, see, you persuaded us in two seconds, that's how persuasive you are, man.
Thank you so much.
You should have put her on at the beginning.
Yeah, that should be, right, thank you so much.
All right, you all have a great evening.
Okay, great, so we, we can leave right now, right? Yes. Thank you, enjoy your rest of the meeting. Thank you.
It's possible.
All right, I'm also leaving, I'll be back in two minutes.
Okay, all right, um, so I'm in charge of admitting people.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, next up is, uh, petition of John Dennehy for a variance or finding such other relief is maybe available from the ZBA from zoning bylaws section four point two, confirming permitting or establishing that the reconstructed residence of a previously non-conforming residence with less required front setback is permissible under MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, seven, or otherwise. Properties at fifty Whitney Street, map two lot one thirty-four, in a residence B district, was a subject of a prior petition allowing reconstruction in a different location under ZBA decision twenty-one dash nine seventeen. All right, so this one requires a little history, which I'm prepared to give, I think, up, no, I won, hold on. I've got two. Okay, we're gonna try to share a screen here. All righty, can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, all right, so this, this is the history here, and because we're gonna have a written decision on this, I wanna just spend a couple of minutes going over it, let me see if I can make that bigger. Okay, so here's what was here before. There was a house in the back, this is in twenty nineteen. Um, and in the front was the former railroad station back when the rail line was active, so kind of dilapidated structure. Uh, but it was there, and it had its own foundation, you can see right here. Um, it didn't parallel the street, it went off at an angle to the street. Um, and the whole old structure, and actually part of the newer structure, uh, were probably within the sixty-foot setback. So under full enforcement of the zoning bylaw, um, the old structure would have to go. And they came in. Mr. Dennehy hired an architect, a good one, who did this plan here, showing what was on the ground now, and this is a little bit small, maybe I can zoom it in a little bit more. Let's try. See what a hundred percent is. Yeah, not much better, all right. But these plans are in our records, and you can see that even though sixty feet would take you back here, this corner of the building was thirty point two feet back from the street, and this corner of the building was somewhat further back, but nowhere near enough to be in compliance. And under our zoning bylaw, we can allow the continuation and rebuilding in place of an existing non-conformity. Those are findings under section one point four point six. And that's what they asked for. And by the way, here's what the garage was going to look like. Um, and we, uh, those permits aren't required, they're discretionary. Um, but the board was persuaded under the circumstances that it made some sense. Um, and, and note here, as we're looking at this garage, it's a single door. Not that we cared about the doors themselves. So the next thing that happened was, uh, same good architect, went back to the same professional land surveyor, and had a plan drawn for where the new building should be. Now, it's still pretty fuzzy. Um, but that planner, being a good planner, said, don't put it thirty point two feet back, move it back another four inches just to allow, in case somebody puts a board in the wrong place or something, just being smart and careful. So the building was supposed to be thirty point five, um, feet back. Um, again, you know, way within the sixty-foot setback. And that was on March tenth, twenty twenty. Then, uh, an unfortunate event occurred, probably a bad decision. Um, the owner changed the plants. The owner changed what he want, and he built this, this is a picture I took last night, which, as you can see, has two doors, again, there's nothing wrong with two doors per se. But having rebuilt a couple of garages myself, the problem with two doors versus one is you usually need about two feet more width. So, the building was completed, and, uh, the owner went to the building inspector asking for a occupancy permit. This is in probably, maybe the summer or fall of twenty twenty. And the building inspector, uh, being a good cautious building inspector, said, where's the certified plot plan, showing you built at the right spot? Well, you don't need one, he was told. Well, you have to go get the certified plot plan. Um, and I guess they went back and forth in this for some time. It then appears that the owner got the certified plot plan, the certified plot plan shows that the building as built, actually, was built two feet, just as you'd expect, two feet too close to the road. It didn't follow the old foundation line at all. It followed where they chose to put the new foundation, and its closest point was twenty-eight point five feet, according to the same surveyor, who's been doing all the surveying all along, uh, from the edge of the road. Um, so, a pretty clear violation. Um, the building, and that plan was drawn in September. Building inspector continued to press, and it wasn't until November that the owner finally gave the building inspector the plan. And that's when we got to, uh, where we are, because the building inspectors that I can't... And that's when we got to where we are, because the building inspectors said, I can't issue an occupancy permit. You built this in the wrong place, and it wasn't an accident. You knew where you were supposed to build it. And you just chose because you wanted a different garage. You, you built it in the wrong spot, so. That's where we are. Mister Murphy. Why don't you pick it up from there?
Thank you, Mr. Novak. I, I, I do think you're a little bit harsh in your description, but I understand that. You have been here from the beginning on this particular project, and I have just come in much later than you. I would just kind of try to put things a little bit in a different context if you'd permit me. This. Building on fifty Whitney Street was at the time of the permit that was granted by the board in twenty twenty. A preexisting nonconforming structure. In, in two ways, it was preexisting nonconforming in that it was likely constructed prior to zoning. And it was also a preexisting nonconforming in, in the way in which is defined now under the change to forty eight. Section seven, in which so long as something's been there for over ten years. Then without any action to take it down, then it's deemed to be for forty eight section seven purposes. A preexisting. Nonconforming. Lot, and I've just lost somehow my. My, my. Have you taken me off the?
No, I, I, I can go back to the sheriff you want.
I can, no, I, I, I don't, I don't see myself anymore.
Oh, no, you, you, you're still there. I don't, I don't know why I disappeared, and I can put up the plan that you sent us.
Okay, and so, so, so we, so a, at the time of the original, and I think I'll maybe I'll just see where I am. Oh, okay, now I found myself again. If, so at the time that this was submitted in twenty twenty, seeking a finding. It was, it was not only eligible for a finding. But it would also have been eligible for an extension of that nonconformity. So long as that nonconformity would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Under forty eight section, section six, the exceptions to forty eight section six, I see you shaking your head, so apparently you don't.
Well, that's, that's not what the statute says. The statute, statute would say that we are allowed. Under the zoning by law, under, under the statute, to extend it laterally. This way. So, but not to create a new nonconformity. And the prob, the prob, the entire problem here is, is a, a two foot brand new nonconformity that was never there before.
If, if I might, I think the language. Specifically, preexisting nonconforming structures or uses may be extended or altered. Provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there's a finding by the permit granting authority. Or by the special permit granting authority designated by ordinance or by law, by law. That such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity used to the neighborhood. It doesn't say anything about, with all due respect, anything about a lateral change or anything like that.
With, with, with all due respect, there are several dozen cases on this, and there isn't a single one that I've been able to find. That says you can create a new nonconformity by moving closer to the road.
Well, I, I, I do think that in light of the change to seven and as applied to six, that that is permissible. But I'm listening very closely to your comments, which are appreciated. If I could continue.
Please.
So. So. And I guess I would just point out that it is not infrequent. That when there is a nonconformity and somebody puts on a dormer or something like that. Even though that increases the nonconformity to either sideline or a real line, that that still is a permissible extension, but. Be that as it may. So in any event, the, the construction did take place. As, as, as it was ultimately constructed. And I do not think that there was any evil intent or any, any, anything to see whether or not they could. Take some advantage of the, of the, of the board. That they believe that the, the, rather than being at the thirty point. Two, two or thirty point five, the distance was twenty nine feet. And, and as shown in the report by Mr. Wang, who is also engineer Wang that is also here. Because of the fact that, that it's just the point of the building as opposed to the whole length of the building.
It, it is the whole length of the building. Mr. Wang and your engineer both drew it incorrectly. See, see where the dotted line parallels the road? Those aren't our facts. Are, the, the line that they were allowed to go to is parallel to, it's the blue line I've added here. So while, while I appreciate their comments, they're, 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 they're factually wrong.
So when you say the, the, are you saying that the decision that was made? And this is not something that I was aware of.
Right.
In reading your decision, in reading the decision. It says in the decision, it is thirty point two feet. At the closest point to the property line. It doesn't say. It doesn't say anything about the, the line that, that you have drawn there.
Well, i- if you go back and, and, and look at our file and, and look at our hearing, which should be of record. You'll see that what we gave permission was to build at the exact same foundation line.
Okay, so we, we did, I mean, in, in submitting this petition, I was reading the actual decision. I was not. And the actual decision just says. That the proposed addition will not increase the nonconformity to the current setback. So the nonconformity to the current setback was that it would be no closer than thirty point two feet if you read the decision now.
No, that's, that's, that's simply not correct. Here is the current setback. Thirty point two feet here, a little more, I forget the measurement. Was it like thirty six feet here on? Because it's at an angle.
Yeah.
And that's what you could not change. This, this is the plan. This is the.
That was.
October one.
Undoubtedly, that was the plan that was submitted at the time of the.
Yeah, here it is. And this is what we approved. So this is what he could build to right here. Thirty point two here, thirty six, i- if, if I've guessed it right, thirty six there, whatever it is. I'm not a, I'm not a registered professional engineer. And no closer, and we were extremely explicit about that. And the plan is extremely clear. There's nothing on this plan or anything in our decision that says you get to parallel the street line at thirty point two feet. Like, you know, you, maybe Mr. Ryan and, and, and Mr. Wang assumed that, but. That's the dangers of assumption. That's just not correct.
Can, can you show me the line that you draw, Mr. Novak, please?
Sure, you mean, you want to go down to the one at the, the little blue line I added?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes, that, this is just my drawing it by hand, attempting to approximate two feet here.
Okay. So you, you basically made the assumption that. And I don't know whether or not it's true or false, because we didn't measure that. But you made the assumption that the, the angle of the, of the now constructed. Foundation wall closest to the street. Was exact, the exact angle of the, of the preexisting one, which I don't know whether or not that's.
Well, it, it, it has to be to match the plans, otherwise the house is crooked, but that's okay. I mean, there are a lot of parallel lines in that, in that design.
Okay, I, I.
But, 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 but I agree with you. Yeah. The distance between the, the, the black line here that your. Surveyor, Mr. Ryan drew, and this blue line, that's just me trying to roughly show where two feet would be. That's not scaled.
Okay.
But, 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 but the, the implication of that is.
That the same pitch of the, of the garage had, had the same angled relationship to the street that existed before. Which I don't know whether or not that's true or false.
Well, but, but, but that was the plan we approved. The plan we approved was not only the same angle, it was in exactly the same location.
All right.
Because, because remember, otherwise, as, as you know, because you are a good lawyer, otherwise they have to go way back up here to sixty feet. And that's, you know, nobody wanted to do that.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I, I don't believe that the. That the, the outgrowth of what would have happened on, back in, in two thousand and twenty would have been. That they wouldn't have been able to use the setback distances that existed from the preexisting nonconforming use. I think that would, as I said, that the first sentence of my, of my conversation tonight would be unduly harsh. And so I, I, I guess what I'm, I'm asking the board and is not to be unduly harsh here. Because there, there is not a, a significant difference. Between what has been built and what it was that you have expressed was anticipated to be built. And that, you know, we have. Really kept to the essence of one point four point six and to section six. About the change, extension, or alteration not being more substantial, not substantially more detrimental. To, to the neighborhood. And we did submit the letters from the, the three closest. A butters on either side and across the street. And. And if you know the site, you know that it was a, a difficult site. It, it, it had that historic use as the depot. It has the train tracks there. It, it has been a, a definite benefit to, to the neighborhood and improvement to the property. And an improvement to, to the town of Sherburne. And what we're asking here is for relief. And I think that relief is consistent with one point four point six and with section six and seven. And, you know, you, you may not agree with me, but I, I'd ask you to exercise. Some kindness on this and to permit this property to be. Occupied and to not. Essentially say chop off two feet of, of a building really without any. Beneficial change to appearance or anything to the neighbors, to the street. It is difficult in that area to measure. If you had gone, if you had gone to the site, you would probably agree with me. I, I see you shaking your head again, but you would agree with me that the, 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 there is a topographical change. Between where the road is and where this lot is.
Not, not for a professional land surveyor. They came out the same way every time. And this isn't a miss of, you know, in, in one of our other. Discusses, we talked about measurements and professional land surveyors survey to one one hundredth of a foot. One one hundred, one one hundredth of a foot is a little more than a tenth of an inch. It's point one two inches.
Well.
It is, it is about the width of, 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 of a thick marker line. This is off by two feet. It's not close.
We think it's, it's, we think it, with all due respect, we think it's, it's a thirty point five, we think it's a foot and a half. And, and, and as it was pointed out by Mr. Wang, when he compared the different. Surveys that were done, there are other situations in which the surveys did have slight variation. Some of them, you know, were seven feet off. In certain places when they did things. So it's not as if never is there a time. When a surveyor makes a mistake or there's a difference in the way in which people measure things. And I, and, and I do, I do believe with all due respect that you are being unduly harsh for. This situation.
Mister Murphy, you can say unduly harsh as often as you want. But, but the facts are clear that your guy tried to hide the wall from the zoning inspector on this. And we do not appreciate that. He didn't appreciate it. And, and, and the facts are also clear that. Mister Wang, while he's a professional engineer, is not qualified as a registered land surveyor at all. Not one bit. And, and frankly, the fact that he is criticizing the consistent work done by professional land surveyors is. I think open to question. The materials he submitted, sir, let, let, let me just finish. The materials he submitted are. Factually wrong, because he says there's two point two feet over the line. No, when you draw a line correctly, it's just under fifty feet that's over the line. And it isn't point zero 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 percent of the building. It's one point seven percent of the building. And, and Mr. Wang's final conclusion that it's okay, because only a small percentage of the buildings of the line. Is, as you and I both know, not the law of Massachusetts. If that was the law, and I put up a one million square foot building, I could put a hundred and seventy three feet wherever I wanted. Because it's a small percentage. That isn't the way it works, and we know that.
Well, I, I, I do, again, I appreciate your candor and frankness about this. I do think that Mr. Wang and I were both looking at the nearest point as opposed to what you've described today in your history. About the intention of the decision that the foundation be in the same location as the prior foundation. I did not immediately read that, that way, but I didn't have the benefit of attending. Your earlier hearing. I didn't see that language specifically in the, in the decision. But it could be.
I have a question. Mister Chair, if I.
Please, please.
Mister Murphy. Are you questioning whether the applicant had previously represented? That, that they would be using the existing foundation or footprint? Do you question whether that was a, a representation that was made and whether it was part of our decision? I, I'm, I'm confused about the back and forth on this.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in any way contending that the intention at the time that this was submitted. Was that they were not, they were going to use, it says it right in the decision, they were going to keep the same footprint.
Okay, so, and, and, and why is it? What difficulty was there staking on the ground? The location of the existing foundation? I mean, I, I'm trying to figure how. Mister, the, the chair seems to be. The opinion on the record that, that the line was deliberately extended. Not by accident.
I guess, I guess, I guess my answer is, it's. Having built garages and having built buildings. I'm not a builder. I believe the athlete is a builder. It's just not possible not to know where that is. I mean, it's gonna be right there. It's a very heavy, difficult part of the building to move. Even if it was probably just crummy cinder blocks under the old train station. You can't miss it. It, it's, it's not like a, a mythological point, a thousand feet back in the woods. That's a thousand feet from one thing and two thousand feet from another, and you need a surveyor to find it. It was there.
To, so, to, to just. Finish, Mister Chairman. Mister Murphy, I'm still not sure. Are you contending that? This line was extended by accident? Excusable neglect? So, some, something other than intentionally?
I, I believe it was a mistake or neglect, and I don't think that there was an intention to say, let's get this two feet closer to the line. But I wasn't there. I was hired af, you know, after the fact. And I read what I could read. I saw what I could see. I hired people to assist me in seeing whether or not we could present something.
Yeah.
I, I, I told them to go get the neighbors to say, is this okay? So, you know, what, I spoke with the building inspector to see whether or not there was something that we could do to see whether or not we could get this permitted. And they said, you have to bring it to the board. You have to kind of face the music, and I'm facing the music and. And I'm taking the shots.
Are you asking, are you asking for a variance?
I would prefer not to ask for a variance. I would prefer to see whether or not you could use your authority under one point four point six. But having done this before, I ask for anything. I'll ask for under one point four point six. I'll ask for under forty eight section six or seven. I asked in my petition for a variance. And I asked, as it said, I think in the notice, for anything else that you guys could come up with. To permit this structure to receive a certificate of occupancy. And if in fact. There, you know, there is some way of, of permitting it. Under some other condition or something else that is responsive to the board's concerns. That, that. That, that applicant, you know. Seek and obtain permission from the town, then I'm, I'm asking for it. You know, I am basically urging you to be kind to, to this.
And, and, and there's an awful lot that we agree on here, Jim. First is that the fact, he, he has support of his neighbors, so he gets along well with his neighbors, that's a great thing, you know? Twenty percent of the cases that come to this board, you used to chair this board, are here because the neighbors can't get along. So the fact that this guy gets along well with his neighbors and has letters of support from his neighbors is, that's a nice thing, that's a good thing. I also agree with you that whether or not this was intentional, isn't really the point, there isn't proof that it was intentional. My point is, it's almost impossible for it to be done by accident. It's the example I, I use, it's like the people I see all the time commuting who drive around to stop school bus in front of them. And pass the bus with the flashers and then go zooming ahead. You can't do that by accident, it's not that you didn't see it, it was right there in front of you. And in this case, the foundation location was right there in front of it, they, they, they couldn't miss it. And, and I, you know, I like you, I, I, I prefer people to you, you are a good lawyer. But I, I just think the facts here are so absolutely awful for the applicant. That, that even with you doing your best and, and Deshaun Wang doing his best, and this new surveyor doing his best. The problem is the facts are just awful and they're not going to change. Uh, it, you know, I, I, I hear you on your argument about one point seven. With respect, that is just dressing a variance up in, in another outfit. And, and the cases do not support a new and different intrusion closer to a setback line. I couldn't find one of them. The, the one that is probably most helpful to you and, and is the reason why we have one point four point six. It's easy to remember for people who do not like me, because it's called the Bedrick case. And it's involved a property down the Cape, but it didn't allow anybody to go closer to the property, to, to, to the setback line. I, I, I don't mean to be harsh, but I am trying to be firm. Because your, your client has had a number of bites at the apple here. And the situations and facts are much worse than, than your materials, which I'm sure were submitted in good faith. Would, would tend to imply, and I don't want, I don't want people to be surprised when they read the decision to say that, wait a second. Mister Wang's documents are just not correct. So.
I guess I, I guess I would just then say a couple more things and I, I know I appreciate the amount of time that you've given me. But I would point out that, you know, in Sherburne and one point four point six B, they, they do have. A thousand square foot kind of buffer or, or. Amount of square footage that gives the building inspector some leeway. So if in fact, the, 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 the change, alteration or expansion doesn't exceed a thousand feet. That there is some power in the Sherburne bylaw. So even if I took your two feet times twenty-five feet or fifty feet, we're still way under the thousand.
I, I, I don't see any thousand foot exemption, I've got one point four point six open ahead of me.
B, B.
There's no B. One point four point six is amended eighty-nine and ninety-two, it's all one paragraph.
Twenty twenty and twenty twenty.
I got the one.
Amended nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-two and twenty twenty. And there's a B.
Can I make a comment, Rick?
Sure.
What he's speaking about is a section of the bylaw that allows a non-conforming structure to be altered. Uh, or extended so long as the proposed alteration or extension is fully in conformance with the bylaw. And is less than a thousand square feet, then I am given the, the authority to issue that building permit without having.
Oh, they didn't have to come to us.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, but in this case, obviously that, that wouldn't apply because it doesn't conform.
Um, right.
I have a couple of comments if you, if you have a minute for.
Please.
So first off, the, speaking just back to, to what the original decision said when there was the question about what was proposed and what wasn't proposed. The original decision actually states specifically that. The, the case for this position in which they proposed to demolish the original pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Keeping the same footprint and building a garage in the same location. So I think that answers the question as far as how it was presented the first time around, okay? It doesn't change where we are now. But, uh, my thought on this is that there is something to Deshawn's plan. Okay, where he shows that little corner projecting beyond, uh, uh, the line of, of what was originally there, okay? Which is not to say that this is good, I don't like this, but it's, it's within the power of the board. And so I'll suggest it perhaps. You could have, back when this thing came in front of you, approved a project as a, as a finding. That went to whatever the old setback line, I think thirty point two, correct? And it wouldn't necessarily have had to have been parallel. Uh, it could have had, it could have been this, this shape of, with a clipped corner, say. Because you wouldn't have been creating a new non-conformity. You never would have gotten any closer than that thirty point two line, so. The board could, again, could, I think. By finding, allow this building to be not having to get cut back to the original, uh, 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 decision, which was to keep the foundation footprint exactly the same. You could have allowed it to be expanded so long as it didn't get any closer to the, to the lot line. Now whether you're willing to do that is up to you.
Chris, Chris, I, I appreciate your views and always respect your input, that is not the law of the Commonwealth. The law of the Commonwealth is that the two-foot extension that shows on the screen. I'll try to show it with my mouse over here in the larger area.
Yep.
That requires a variance, period.
Okay.
And, and, and dressing it up in another outfit and trying to call it something else is inventive, it's still a variance. That, that's why we said you, you, you can go to the old, we, we, we can give you, remember that. It's supposed to be set back to, you know, here or something like that, wherever the sixty is. And, but we had the discretion to try to let them go out to the old footprint line. And we said, go to the footprint line. But the problem is this corner here, where if people can see my mouse, that's not the old footprint line, the old footprint line is the blue line. So this whole area here, which is. Square feet, forty-nine square feet. Not two square feet, is all out of bounds.
Well, guess then, you know, if, and, you know, I know that this is not something that the board likely gives, well, likes to give. But then we still would say, you know, literally enforcing this is going to impose a substantial hardship here. And that there are. Uh, special circumstances on, on the shape, particularly the shape and the topography of the, of the land. That affects it, that's unusual for this, 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 this property, so, and for the town. Again, you know, I, I see you shaking your head, I would really much rather you, you give us it under forty-eight. Section six and seven.
I'm only shaking my head because, a- as you know, the law prohibits us from just handing out AHEC variances. We're not supposed to do it, the only reason this variance is needed tonight is because. He chose not to build it to the blue line, he chose to build it two feet over the line. That has nothing to do with the soil conditions, that has nothing to do with the shape or topography of the lot. Maybe it wasn't a venal choice, maybe it was, you know, good faith error, whatever, doesn't matter. It has nothing to do with any of the statutory grounds.
Is, is there any way, Mister Chairman, in which you, that, that there is some way of him, him not having to take down this building then?
Sure, sure. Sure, i- i- in my view, he should do what he should have done as soon as Chris Candy tumbled to this. I mean, he's a builder, a- as I understand it, this wall is not filled with plumbing, thank goodness. It's going to be expensive, you shore it up from the inside, you take the wall off, you save what pieces you can, you cut it back. You probably leave the old foundation or your new foundation there as a planter, that's what most people who have to do tear downs do, then you put the wall back on. You're probably going to have to replace the garage doors at the front, it's probably a very expensive mistake. But it can be fixed, it doesn't require tearing the whole house down. I mean, again, I'm using the analogy of the people who make the mistake of driving past to stop school bus. It's not, unless, if you actually hit a child, it is the end of the world. But if you just, if there just happens to be a policeman on the other side, you get caught and stopped, it's just an expensive mistake, you get a gigantic moving violation. And, and I think you're, you get surcharged a lot, I've never done this, but, but it's, it's, it's my constant nightmare as I see it so much when I'm commuting.
I have a comment, Mister Chair.
Wait, please go ahead.
Well, we have been in the position before of strict enforcement. Of the setback requirement with new construction on Maple Street. We had the home that was built with, I don't know how many feet within the, the front yard setback. And there were all sorts of reasons why it was a mistake, but it, the, you know, the circumstances were. Very compelling in a sense, but we could not grant the applicant any relief, certainly not a variance.
Right, that was that, that was the house on Maple Street and they had to tear the, the, the front stoop, which was concrete off. And I think a, a two-story entryway and, and put it back on. And it was expensive. But, but in, in terms of fairness, Mister Murphy. I had my assistant go through, we found seven or eight recent variance applications where the people withdrew them or, or changed their plan. To, to comply with the zoning bylaw. And what's not fair to them is to give this. Knowing violation of variance after the fact. I, I, I really urge your client to, you know, it, it, it's a nice house, we all agree, it's a nice looking house, it's much better looking than what was there. And it'll be just as good looking with the wall in the right place. And, and, and he can't live there now because he can't get an occupancy permit because Mister Candy did his job. And that's been going on for almost a year now. And I, I really urge your guy to. Make the right decision here, fix the house so he can move his family in and, and be happy. Uh, Mister, Mister Wang, you've got your hand up, sorry.
Yes, I, I apologize for, so whatever interpretation. Uh, but I was not surveyor, I was just called to analyze two surveyors' plan. And I was not aware of this case at the beginning as the benefit of attended the original decision making. Because usually my understanding of setback to any side is the minima to each side, not the entirety of that side. So that's why I did, uh, the, the typical setback analysis rather than this case specific decision. So I apologize, I didn't get to that. But I like to also point it out is that on all the plans, if I didn't find the dimensions was marked. That from the far side as a dimension required, so that's also, it's only thirty point two was marked for the original approval. If the approval on the plan, it should be consistent with the original decision. And that corners is a, a setback that dimension should be also have been, have, would be required to mark on the plan, but that's probably.
No, that, that, that was the play the architect brought to us. And, and we were very clear, build to that existing foundation.
No, no.
That, that was, that was, in zoning law, that's pretty clear enough, and I, I appreciate that you don't like the way the architect drew his plan, but. That's how I drew it and it was, it was plenty clear.
Right, and for the setback is not two feet, as I said, one point two feet. Because thirty point two minus twenty-nine, that's one point two, not two feet.
It's, except the same surveyor, the original surveyor, who laid out the plan, says it's not twenty-nine, it says it's twenty-eight point five. So that's one point seven feet, roughly twenty inches.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I, I, I don't know which one is more accurate. Because for the same surveyors, if you look in the force, for the plan to the setback from the, from the railroad. It's, it's like almost seven feet difference. Okay, so, so that's why when I was looking and reviewing the two surveyors' plan. I'm questioning more than I know, because I, I, I'm just, I'm not licensed to do land survey.
So, so. And, and, and I'm not either, but, 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 but the surveyor who did. Did it the first time, he was the surveyor of record and he did everything exactly consistently until he came back with an unpopular answer. And now suddenly there's a different one. And that's okay, that happens, that's not illegal, immoral or fattening. But it does mean that in my mind, I'm going to weigh what the first guy did a little heavier.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I have, no, I say, well, I have seen some surveyors' plan. Within six inches of difference in, in, in some, you know, land surveying plans, so it's not.
But, but, but not here, this, this, this is not a six inch problem.
Right, no, it's more than that, I, 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 I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not here trying to ask him for any excuse for, for the applicant. I'm just presenting my findings as Mister Murphy also presented his findings. As far as what is the best way to resolve the issue is definitely up to the board. And then you'll see on what the situation, I don't know whether intentionally, because from what I can see. He definitely can move the building backwards, which is probably better. In that way will improve compliance and meet the back setback, improve, uh, uh, compliance with the zoning bylaw. I don't see what's the benefit he moving forward was kind of, I mean, I, I could, if, if he intentionally did that, I was, I would be surprised to understand.
You know, ult- ultimately it doesn't matter because this is not a matter of. It's not a matter of intent. Sometimes, again, having built a couple of garages, I'm, I'm not a builder, I'm not an engineer. But you look at that old foundation, you say, you know what, it's going to be easier to build outside that thing. And that's when the alarm bell should have gone off that, yeah, except we can't. Um, and, and maybe that's what happened, and we don't know, but it doesn't matter, the building's in the wrong spot. Jim, we've interrupted you many times and I apologize, if there are concluding remarks that you want to make in your presentation. Or if you feel you've done so, please, please tell us.
Um, notwithstanding what you've expressed, I would still ask the board to, uh, uh, grant relief to permit this building. Uh, to get a certificate of occupancy as currently constructed.
Okay, fair enough, thank you, thank, thank you for your presentation and, and zealous representation of your client. And, and you too, Mister Wang. Um, okay, are there any members of the public here to comment on this petition? Okay, I'm not hearing any, I'm not seeing any. Uh, Genie, by the way, are you back? I don't see you on my screen. You'll stop the share, now I can see more people, okay. Board members, how do we feel about this?
It's a difficult situation because ultimately moving the wall back one point eight, eight feet or whatever.
Could I, could I speak for? Oh, sure, sorry, sorry, who are you, sir?
I'm Mister Dennehy.
Okay, great, yes, yes, please do speak, sorry.
How you doing, how you doing? I, I, I am a licensed construction supervisor. However, I, I grew up in East Boston, I grew up in a housing project. I grew up poor, I was a spokesman for the Boston Harbor Clam Diggers. Um, I, I dug clams all my life, I work as a correctional officer. I, 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 I'm a correctional officer, every single day, work overtime, every single day. The guys, yes, yes, yes it is. Uh, I've never built anything brand new, this is the first time I've ever built anything brand new. I've only done remodels in East Boston, Dorchester, so I was unfamiliar with everything. The guys that I hired were, were, were veterans, they're veterans and they're very, very good builders. And, 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 you know, I, I trusted in them and they, they did nothing to, to, to do anything deliberate. And, and that garage that they, they built there, I, I had made a decision because they, I was, I was told by the garage company. That, that the garage door, having that single garage would be like a nightmare, like putting it up and down. So I said, you know, I, you know, put the two car garages, it only makes sense. And I never thought, and, and my, we never, there's no intention. ever to do anything to cannery or do anything false. You know, you know, what I'm guilty of, maybe, you know, I'm going through a divorce right now. You know, my, my, my best friend at work, he killed himself. You know, I, I mean, I don't, I don't even know how much more I can handle, you know? To be honest with you, I did everything in good faith. All I did was work hard. You know what I'm guilty of? Working three jobs. I work as a clam digger, correctional officer. I, I do properties over and all I do is try. And that's what I'm guilty of, sir. So, so if, if you want to tell me that, you know, that, that, you know, that, you know, it's not in the right footprint. I totally understand that, but, but you can't tell me that I, I, I broke the law because I had no intention of doing that. And I swear to you, I'm, I'm my, you know, I'm a benefactor, Sherborne. I give my heart, my soul.
Good. Well, then we are glad to have you and we want to see you in your, in your house. The question is, how do we get there? And, you know, let, let's take off the table, the, the question of good faith, but, but the building was absolutely built in the wrong spot and, and, and good faith or not, or too busy with other jobs or not. It is pretty clear that, that when the building inspector tried to inquire about this, it took a long time for the information to get to. You know, a lot of us, when we, when we make a mistake, sometimes don't, don't handle it perfectly. And, and I'm certainly guilty of that, maybe you are too, but we just don't have any grounds to give him relief here. I don't think, but, but, but you know, board members, what, first of all, does anybody else in the public wish to speak? Okay, board members.
Well, what I, what I was saying, I'm looking at it from the point of view of an architect rather than a lawyer. There doesn't, from what I hear you say, Rick, there doesn't appear to be a legal remedy for this difficulty. On the other hand, moving the wall a foot and a half or whatever, nobody is ever going to know the fact that the wall moved. It's gonna look identical. So I'm wondering, we're, I think we're in a, we have a dilemma here.
Yeah, and, and let me try to be clear, Ron. It's not there's nothing we could do. We could grant a variance where we know there aren't any legitimate grounds for it. And boards do that. Boards do that because they feel sorry for the applicant or because they're buddies with the applicant or whatever. It's completely improper. Nobody should go to jail for it. And boards do do that. It has not been our practice. I, I call them, I hack variances. I hack, the neighbors don't mind and it's a nice looking house. I hack, give me variance.
Well, I heck might not have been such a bad policy. They're not supposed to freely grant variances to Supreme Judicial Court, appeals court are very clear on that. So I mean, as Ron said, this is a dilemma, Mr. Dennehy. I am very respectful of, of your situation and how hard you work and I don't think it's really relevant for us to dig into the circumstances here, but I'm satisfied by what you, you, you told us, you hired reputable builders and and you rely on them to do with it. So they, whatever. So I, I, I really think that when we in effect, we have a violation of the, of the, of the zoning by law. And Ron said, well, is there a reasonable remedy? I mean, we have to, in this situation, if, if we if we ordered a tear down because of the violation, Rick, well, the reasonableness of that decision would be something that the courts might well consider, you know?
Right, right. But if our order was move the wall or tear everything down back to sixty feet, they'd have a clear option. It was much better. Now, I, I, I think that the order magnitude of the cost here is quite material, probably forty thousand dollars. Not three hundred thousand dollars. Just, just we're all sort of on the same page of what the, what the costs are here. It's not a five thousand dollar job. It's a big job. But the plumbing isn't in that wall. Thank goodness.
Well, I guess this is where I'm, I'm really relying on the chair for guidance.
Fair enough. I, I appreciate Mr. Murphy's zealous representation of his client. But as a legal matter, I do not think that any of the items put forth by, by him or by the engineer hold any water in, in, in the scrutiny a court would give it. They, they are, they are good bids by, by, by good smart guys dealing with absolutely terrible facts. And, and we've all been that lawyer. Those of us who are lawyers, right? You do the best you can. Certainly, well, may, maybe it's never happened to you, Jonathan. It certainly happened to me. Mr. Denny's personal circumstances are certainly appealing, but they are exactly what variances are not supposed to be about. And if he had come to us as soon as this arose a year ago and said, I've got this problem. I've discovered. What can I do to fix it? I might feel differently. That clearly did not happen. And let's not get into a debate about how noble or not noble that was. But the fact is that the only reason that we're here is because finding out the real facts has been extremely difficult. And even tonight, we've had arguments over facts that are relatively inarguable. So I'm, I'm not in favor of granting relief here. That's my position. I, I think, you know, frankly, coming into tonight, I was thinking that what I wanted to do was call Chris Candy tomorrow if the vote did not go in this guy's favor and say, start the fines. No, we've been waiting, you know, you can't have to chase somebody down on whether or not they drove around the school bus. And then have them say, how about you let me off with a warning? I certainly think Candy can use his discretion not to start fines right away. But I, but I do think it's in Mr. Denny's interest to try to come up with a way to move that wall back. Because until then, he can't move into the house. And we want him to move into the house. We can't give him variance.
Well, he can't get occupancy permit. What you just said about whether or not I can move into I'm sorry, he, he just doesn't have an occupancy permit. And I don't know, people do live in homes without occupancy permits. That's just a real world observation. And so I, I mean, I don't know. Some point seems that there should be some flexibility, at least in enforcement. And if Mr. Dennehy does, as you suggest he should do, and I agree, just move the wall. Talk to the the guys who built it about doing it. And once he was embarking on that, maybe he can make use of what is there while he's waiting for the project.
That, that's a very sensible and, and thoughtful suggestion, John. It, it sounds like what you're saying is, listen. Let's, let's look at the enforcement side of this and see if we can be flexible on that. And I think we probably can, not that the wall doesn't have to be moved, but that doesn't have to be moved tomorrow morning. And you know, maybe Mr. Candy in town council and I can talk about what room there is for or for the zoning enforcement officer to legitimately, because he has to do his job too. We can't, we can't shirk ours and then ask them and dump it on him. To legitimately let them live there. While he's working on how to how to get that wall moved in some time. Essentially, Mr. Denny, it would be a trade for time. It wouldn't be that you get to beat the wall there, but it sounds like part of your problem right now is, is you want to use the house as a house. And this wall is between you and doing that.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may ask a question, it may not be so I, again, so I, I don't have the benefit of the original position. You've said the house have to build on the original foundation as a setback line. Is that just to make in the correction, if it has to be that way, a little bit easier from my consideration is, I don't mean to cut corners, but if the original decision says to build on the original, does the house allow for like a can deliver like a, you know, condition on the second floor? So it just move the foundation back or no?
In, inventive idea and a good one to suggest, but no, there's then the, the new zoning violation is just moved up into the air. It just starts on the second floor.
So, so then the, the original would assume there's no ye, but anything extending, right? At that time, if the architect designer have any leaves so there was nothing.
Correct. The, the, the sidewall, I mean, we can bring it back up on screen, but going from memory, the sidewall was nearly identical to the sidewall that's there now, just in the correct position, the vertical wall.
Yeah, this is the first time I, I probably running into inquire the setbacks fully or, or on the side, especially for the cook one. If it's, if the building originally has a parallel, obviously, it's obvious setback uniformly. But again, I'm not trying to make an argument, just as Ms. Candy suggested, that's my experience of looking things. Was setback is tend to be to call for the minimal setback, not for the entirety, but so since the decision was building on the original foundations, different story, so.
Completely different story. Mr. Murphy, one thing you can consider here is asking to have this be continued. Then we would not be voting tonight to turn down your variance and your, your other requests. That would give you and your, your client a chance to talk about it. Think about what you want to do here. We are trying to give you some options within the options that we have, and we really don't have very many. But we think we can work with you on enforcement. So I, I'd suggest that to you because otherwise we're gonna have to call a vote.
All right, I think we'll take the suggestion of continuing it for another meeting in the interim. We'll perhaps talk to Mr. Candy and, and perhaps come up with some suggestion, suggested enforcement alternatives. We'll investigate perhaps the amount of time that it would take if in fact we were able to do work and perhaps get a conditional certificate of occupancy during that time period conditioned upon work being done by some later date or something like that.
Promptly commenced diligently prosecuted and done by X date, something like that. But, but, but you don't have to make that proposal tonight. I, I just would ask you to think about it.
I think we'll take the suggestion of asking you to continue this to a subsequent meeting.
Okay. All right, board members, I'd like to make a motion that we continue.
I second that motion.
Twenty-two oh-two dash six for variance or finding to the next meeting. Moved and seconded.
I second that motion also.
Further discussion? No. All in favor, do it by roll call, no backvotes. I.
Stephen Guy. Fitch, I.
Mr. Denny, thank you for your time and your candid, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Wang as well.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up, number twenty-two oh-two dash seven, appeal of the zoning board appeals by Mary and Brian Moore in the decision of the building commissioner initiative foundation permit, the Phoenix Partners Farm Road LLC lot two A at fifty-three Farm Road, which is in the residence A district. Lot two A is shown on a plan reported in Middlesex South. Registry of these is plan fifty-three of twenty-two. Fortunately, there's no long narrative background on this one. The only matter I might mention is Attorney Murphy and Attorney Murphy, very shortly before the hearing started, we got a, a very short letter from the planning board. Did you both get that?
I did receive it.
I did as well, Mr. Chen.
Okay, right. And, and I'm not sure it really is, is relevant or has bearing on these proceedings, but I just wanted to make sure you had it. Okay. In that case, we're, we're gonna be saying, okay, Mr. Murphy, your turn a lot tonight. Mr. Dennis Murphy, you represent the appellant. You're up.
Yes. Thank you all. It's good to see you again, especially when it's not a forty B night. Could, before I spend the board's time, could I just inquire if the applicant is here to defend the permit? Because we could save everyone's time if, if they're not here to do that.
Well, I'm fairly sure your, your, your brother, Mr. James Murphy, is here to defend the permit.
Okay.
I don't want to speak out of term, Jim. Is that, do I have that right?
That is correct, but I, I also saw that, at least earlier, Mr. Candy was also here.
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Candy is planning to defend the permit. We, we can certainly call it. Well, I don't know if he's here or not, but, but we've gotten a, we've got somebody who appealed the permit, so you're up.
Yes, thank you. So I, I've laid out several reasons why I think the permit was improvidently granted through no fault of the building inspector. This was a happenstance of events, and I'll just recount them very briefly before I was involved. There was an initial filing with the planning board for a five lot ANR that was voted unanimously down, but constructively approved. That was voted unanimously down, but constructively approved because it's a rare thing for ANRs not to be approved. The significance of that, and I do think it's significant. Is that the ANR plan of record is now locked in. It cannot be amended, at least not with this planning board, because it was unanimously denied just a few months ago. The building permit application, uh, included a plan. That was not consistent with the ANR plan of record. And in fact, they're actually based on different base plans by two different authors. So. On which the building permit was issued was. Mr. Wang, the engineer. The ANR plan is by Mr. Fleming and it's dated. December twenty-first, twenty-one, last revised. January twenty-sixth, twenty-two. And you can see that if you zoom in.
My, my, my assuming may not be that great. I'll do the best I can.
Oh, that's, uh, thank you, Attorney Novak. Um. The, the, the other plan, the one that the building permit was based on. Is it predates the record plan and it actually says. Nine. That it's based on Fleming's. Fourteenth twenty-one. Plan, not this record plan, a different version of it. And. I can just give you a, for instance, so you don't have to take my word for it. One of the unique features of Sherburne zoning is you have a control that measures the lot width at the building line. For the recorded ANR plan, the lot width at the building line. Measures three oh seven point six. Plan, Mr. Wang's plan, that same measurement on that plan is three oh one point eight. It's a different number. By, uh, six feet. So I don't want to get into real details, except that if the building permit. On a plan that's not consistent with the plan of record. In my view, it was improvidently granted. So that's my, my first argument. Uh, and I'll just reiterate, the plan that's in front of you, the actual plan of record has a note. Just under the recording information. And it, I won't read it. Well, it's short enough. I'll read it. Uh. It's, it says very succinctly, the above endorsement does not imply that the lots as subdivided and shown on the plan comply with the current town bylaws or applicable state statutes. That's true of every ANR plan. It divides lots. It doesn't mean that the lots are buildable. I think your planning board reiterated that in their memo earlier today. So my first position is. Issued based on a plan that's inconsistent with the plan of record cannot stand. These are not zoning compliant lots according to the own notation. On the plan and according to your own planning board. My second argument, very briefly, is that this is part of a five lot. Uh, contiguous development. And that triggers the EHI R regulation. Which is when you have more than two thousand gallons per day of aggregate flow. That's of particular interest to the Moores. Who at number forty-nine, on the left side of the plan. Have a drinking well that is downgrade from these five new septic systems. And the EHI R just requires a groundwater study. Uh, it just so happens that Mr. Moore is a groundwater professional and is particularly attuned to these issues. And, uh, has actually shown in another meeting with the Board of Health. How these aggregate flows would impact as well. And so. A case for. Board of Health issue the study, but before they could vote on it. The applicant withdrew their, their septic applications. One lot two A squeaked through before that night. Is the basis for the foundation plan that we appealed, and that's before you tonight. So my second reason is that. There's a regulation that requires further study. That is a prerequisite to any permits, because, uh, boy, we'd be in a real pickle if. Started conveying lots, uh, for, for building to innocent buyers before the. The, the rules have been enforced and applied and, and, and complied with. My, uh. My last argument is related to the Board of Health, and that is that. There is a very particular regulation that requires a setback. That's. As a zoning board, we, we deal with setbacks regularly. And part of the issue is that the, the feature, which was an open surface drain. Was not shown on the plan, so that there is no setback. And so that's yet a third reason is that. Required setback between the open surface drain and the soil absorption system. The plan that the building permit was based on did not include that open surface drain, and therefore the setback was not applied. Uh, if I could, so those are my reasons. If I could just touch. One more minute on the issue of the restriction. I came into this case. Uh, after it was already ongoing, and my apologies to the board, because my first activity is usually a title search. We did not get to that until yesterday, uh, thanks to, uh, the documents that were forwarded. My read is that certainly the lot that was conveyed to the Conservation Commission remains under restriction. That has to be perpetual in order for the concom to hold it. Excuse me. The other lot. I have two theories about why that restriction remains binding, and of course, if there is a restriction, there can't be a building permit in violation of it. My first theory is that. Part of a common scheme, when four or more lots. As part of a common scheme, you can have a per- perpetual restriction under chapter one eighty-four. I believe that the conservation parcel, which is lot three B. Was part of a larger assemblage of at least four lots that were restricted, and of course. Lot three B has rights of enforcement over the others. Second theory, very briefly. The nineteen eighty restriction. Expired thirty years later. Thousand ten, then wittingly or unwittingly. Twenty twenty-one. Put back on the property by the plain terms of the deed. Now. I have not exhaustively researched the case law. This one is a little different than the normal situation where there is a reiteration of the restriction. While the thirty-year period remains in effect. Under those circumstances, it's very clear that you don't extend it. But this one, the thirty years expired of its own terms. And then just last year was reiterated. So those are my two theories on the restriction. I think there are. Ample reasons to pull this one back and, um. I think the board could choose any of them, and I, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. James Murphy. Well, I. You wish to speak, uh, I, I, I assume you're speaking for Phoenix Partners and defending the permit.
I am defending the permit, and I would like to have the proponent put in their entire case. And, and if in fact.
Okay.
Unless Mr. Murphy is the person who is going to be subject to cross-examination.
Okay, all right, yeah, fair, fair enough, um, uh.
And I guess I would just also, I would just also say that, as you know. Um, that, uh, the reasons for, uh, the objection to the permit have to be stated by the appellant. And, uh, that the fact that Mr. Pharaoh, who is not an appellant, raised issues. Uh, uh, more than thirty days after the permit was issued, that they're not properly before this board, and the board shouldn't. Uh, uh, take anything on that from Mr. Pharaoh or from this applicant who did not include that. In their, um, in their submittal to the town clerk under forty A section fifteen.
All right, so you're saying, if I hear you correctly, we should ignore the restriction one way or another. The restriction issue one way or another.
I will say it in more detail, but yes, at minimum procedurally, it's not lawful, was raised by Mr. Pharaoh. He's not an appellant here. And it was not included in the submittal by Mr. Dennis Murphy, and therefore under forty A section fifteen, it's not properly before the board procedurally. If you want to talk about it substantively, I can do that at the end.
Okay, so we, we have a couple of different things going on here. Let, let me try to untangle them for everybody who's listening. The restriction issue. Uh, came up yesterday when, when Mr., I believe it's Feno, not Pharaoh. Uh, that's, that's okay. I, 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 I might be getting it wrong. When I got an email, um, from a, 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 a member of town government who said. What do you know about this? And I said, nothing, but I sent it to both sides right away. Um, and I said, there's this old restriction. I don't know if it's valid. I don't know if it's not valid. You two guys, meaning, meaning the Murphys, um, are smart guys. You figure it out for your clients, because then I, I won't have to. Um, so, so that's why this came up late, was it only came with the board's attention like. So th- th- that's why it's coming up late. Uh, Mr. James Murphy, do I also hear you saying you sort of want everybody who's speaking? To the board, uh, in favor of overturning the permit to, to do so before you respond? Is that where you were going?
Well.
Did I have you wrong? Sorry.
The procedure under forty-eight fifteen is that it's different from a special permit or a variance type hearing. That it is actually a hearing in which there are witnesses that have to be sworn under oath, and then they, they give testimony in effect. And so it has a much more quasi judicial effect than what was the typical thing that's before a zoning board. And if in fact, uh, there are going to be people who are going to testify, then they should be sworn. And, and then I should be, have the opportunity to object to certain things. So for example. Again, yes, yet just today, you received materials from, uh, Mr. Owen from the planning board.
Yes.
Uh, from, from our review, that is not a vote of the planning board. That was Mr. Owen's personal opinion. Uh, as far as we know, there was no vote taken by the planning board authorizing Mr. Owen. To send those things to the zoning board of appeals, and if Mr. Owen wanted to testify, he should be sworn. Otherwise, the materials that he submitted, claiming them to be of the planning board, should be stricken.
So let me hear you correctly. You're saying we can't take any evidence from anyone. Unless it's from a sworn witness under oath.
No, 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 the.
Okay, sorry. Let, let, dub it down for me.
You cer- you certainly have, you are the chair of the meeting. It is your.
Okay.
You have the right to, uh, to apply the rules of your board. I would suggest to you though. That much like an arbitration hearing, which doesn't have rules of evidence. It still requires evidence upon which reasonable people would rely upon in the conduct of their ordinary affairs. So that's at least the standard of the evidence, and that to make it better, it would be certainly beneficial if the people who are going to give evidence. As it relates to the issue raised by the appellant, and only the issues raised by the appellant are properly before this board. I would suggest that it may be better to do it in a form that I'm suggesting, but I certainly am not the one. Who gets to make that determination. It's certainly the chair with the assistance of his members. But that's what I am suggesting to the board would be an appropriate thing to do, because. There are many ancillary things that shouldn't come in. It should be, we should go through the narrow path that we're on under forty-eight, eight and fifteen. We should not go out into some, you know, what do people from the public want to say? That isn't the proper way. For a proceeding of this type, in my opinion.
Okay, all right, board members, let's take, let's pretend everybody else is out of the room for a moment, even though they're not. Let me suggest to you that, that I would recommend that our process be that we, um. Uh, take evidence reasonably acceptable to us, that we not require sworn witnesses, except to the extent that we're required to do so by law, in which case we will. And that we make our own judgments about what evidence we let in, subject to the reservation that counsel for both sides can later say. Wait a second, you can't consider X, you can't consider Y, you can't consider Z. For example, if the issue of, um. Let's assume we decided this memo that came in from Mr. Owen, the planning board chair, was just incredibly important, and then the entire case hinged on it. And, and, and it turns out that Mr. James Murphy is right, that we can't legally take a look at it now, because it came up too many days after the appeal was filed. I, I, I think, I think he's, I, I think he gets to reserve the right to make that, and, and same with Mr. Dennis Murphy. I. I'm proposing to you guys that we just run it on an open book basis, get as much out on the table as we can, and then try to reach the right result. What do you think?
Well, I, I agree with you that we ought to, uh. He, I think, uh. Have a broad view in terms of. A hearing evidence that people want to offer. I don't. Know of any requirement that. Evidence be given under oath. If there is such a law somewhere, uh. Obviously, we will, uh, comply with its requirements, but I'm not aware of anything that applies to this proceeding. And we can review all the evidence and give it whatever weight. We care to or. Or sense of relevance. So I, I. I agree with you, Mr. Chair, as to how it operates.
Yeah, I agree. I'm actually asking the board members right now, Mr. Murphy, but.
I, I, I agree also. I don't know why this particular hearing is any, anything unique and different from the previous hearings we've, we've had.
Well, I, 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 I think Mr. Murphy is right, is that it's under a slightly different set of statutes than our variance and special permits. The question is how different? And Mr. Murphy, you were probably about to speak to that.
Both the, the, there is a discretionary power in section fifteen that reads as follows. The chairman or in his absence, the acting chairman may administer oaths, summon witnesses, and call for the production of papers. So you do have that power, and I'm asking you to exercise that power.
Okay. So my, here's my recommendation.
Here's my, here's my suggest. Uh, I hereby propose to my fellow members the following vote. That we, um, hear evidence as submitted by the, um. Applicant, the, the appellant and, and, and the permit holder, um, and other interested party at, as it comes in. Uh, that we will, uh, bear in mind the possibility that either or both counsel will object. To certain portions of evidence as being not allowed under applicable administrative law. And that if, uh, such objections are, are timely, um, or, or, or properly raised, they don't have to be timely. You don't have to be interrupting each other with objections all the time. Before the board renders its decision, we will then ignore those improper things. For example. Uh, if it turns out that it's not proper for us to consider, uh, Mr. Owen's memo, then we'll just ignore it. That's my, that's my, that's my motion.
Well, I'll second that motion. I agree with it.
Mr. Fitch, any commentary?
No, I agree with the motion.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor. I. Alright, moved and seconded, all in favor, I roll call vote, Novak votes aye.
Stefan guy.
Fitch, aye.
Okay, alright, so, returning, if I've got the thread right, Mr. James Murphy. Um, regardless of whether witnesses are sworn, do you sort of want to hear from everybody trying to support the permit before you speak? Or, or trying to attack the permit before you speak is sporting it, sorry.
I would, I would like to hear the appellant's case before I have to put on the, any quote unquote defense.
Okay, fine, fair, um, Mr. Murphy and or Mr. Mrs. Moore. Do you have anything further to say other than this was uh, put forth by Mr. Dennis Murphy as to why this permit was improperly granted?
Yes, just briefly on the point about timing and what uh, what the board is empowered. Uh, I realize these um, building permit or, or zoning enforcement things don't come up every day. Uh, in Sherburne. Uh, I, I did look at your summaries over the last several years and i- i- it's not typical that. And by the way, whoever does those, I wish every town summarized their ZBA decisions for the year. Um.
That, this is not my first. Jeannie Guthrie, who you are complimenting.
Well, uh, much appreciated because uh, if you're a zoning lawyer, it is very hard to find out what the zoning board in a given town. Has done on prior occasions. Uh, I've done a number of building permit appeals and I can tell you, I've, I've never had a sworn witness, I've never had to prepare for trial. And the sine qua non, the, the, the critical thing. That the appeal be made within thirty days, that's the critical time. It's not the magic words, uh, when this appeal was first filed, I don't know that I had been retained yet. Um, this was back uh, a, a letter from over a month ago where the Moores wrote it themselves. Uh, they, they didn't want to miss the deadline and so un- under uh, my, the other attorney Murphy's theory. Oh, is my letter followed theirs, you ignore everything I have to say and that, that can't be the, the, the law. Uh, the point about the restriction that I would make is. What anyone thinks about it, if, if in fact it's valid, which is really not necessarily a, a decision you have to reach. Then all of this is moot because you can't have a building permit to construct buildings on a restricted parcel that doesn't allow it, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Um, and uh. M- m- Mr. Moore, let me get to you in just a moment, let me suggest for the purposes of, of brevity and um, and administration of the case. Um, board members, it's abundantly clear to me that whoever wins or loses this um. Uh, restriction issue is, it's a skew line to our decision. It really has nothing to do with the zoning status of the per- permits. And there, and therefore, I'm going to suggest to you that we advise the parties that whatever we do. It will reserve the rights of all parties to do whatever they want to do on that restriction, including say it has no effect at all. Um, because it's, it's not like a forty B, it's not like it takes away their ability to be here. So, how, how do you feel about that, board members? Because it may save a lot of narrative during this hearing on, on the, on the restriction, which is really. Side issue to us. How do you feel about that? What do you want to hear about it? That's okay.
Hi. Well, I agree with what you said, Rick. Can't really have anything to add.
Ron?
Uh, pretty much the same as Jonathan, I, I, I agree with what you said, no more to add.
Okay, so I, I hereby move that the board advised both parties. That we're aware of the potential title restriction issue. That we do not at this time see it as central to our zoning decision. And that while they may speak to that point, we will conduct ourselves as, as if all of their rights to debate. Whatever effectiveness or lack of effectiveness that old restriction may have is reserved, because we're, we're not going to rule on. That's my, that's my motion.
Second that.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor, aye, uh, Novak votes aye.
Stefan guy.
Fitch, aye.
Okay, gentlemen, I hope that saves a little time, you can save all your powder for each other in another forum. Okay, Mr. Moore, I'm sorry I interrupted you, sir.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to make sure, and I hope you can hear me, my, unfortunately, my other computer died, so I ran over here. But um, the, one of our concerns also about the building permit being issued was that we still have matters open in front of the Board of Health. Related to our concerns about our water quality. That the Board of Health has yet to actually issue a um, I guess a motion or a finding on our concerns. And that remains open and is still, I believe it's an agenda item for their next meeting. So I felt that that should be included on the list of reasons why the building permit might be considered premature, since we have concerns about the groundwater quality. Um, right at our property.
Okay. Thank you, um, anybody else speaking for the um, opponents to the permit? The appellants. Um. And Mr. Dennis Murphy, I think your clients, the Moores, are the only actual parties. So that other people would have to speak as sort of members of the, interested members of the public.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, Mr. James Murphy, Mr. Jim Murphy, I think you've now heard from the appellate side.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I think what has happened is uh, you have not been given a full picture. Of the property or its history and uh.
You want me to put the, the big plan up or not?
No, I, I.
Okay, I'd rather not.
I'll go through things and then, then we'll make our way there. I think it's probably instructive to, to, to have the board have in mind all the things that were not said, as well as the things that were said. So, the first thing that was not said is there has not been any identification. Of anything wrong that the building inspector did with respect to the dimensional requirements for the proposed building lot. There's no uh, there have been no comments or no objections to any of the frontage. Uh, any of the side yard, rear yard, uh, that, that it meets the acre requirement, the lot width. No objections to any of the requirements set forth in the bylaw. I think what also, also you have not been told is that there was uh, an A and R plan. That was signed by the planning board for essentially this same lot. Back on September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And if in fact you're so inclined, you would find it as plan number six fifty-two of twenty twenty-one. It is a, essentially the same lot at fifty-three Farm Road. Containing slightly different dimensions, but fifty thousand one hundred and seventy-two square feet. As opposed to the fifty thousand one hundred and ninety-five square feet that are contained in the. Uh, A and R plot, plan, excuse me, A and R plan that was recorded in, as plan number fifty-three of twenty twenty-two that you had brought up previously. What they also did not tell you is that the Board of Health did grant a septic permit for this lot. What they also did not tell you is that the Board of Health granted a well permit for this lot. What they also did not tell you is that they appealed to the Board of Health under the Board of Appeals' appeal process. From the grant of that septic permit and from that well permit. And that the Board of Health denied their appeal. And gave them notice that had they, if they wished to, they could have appealed those actions of the Board of Health. To a court of the Commonwealth, which they, of course, did not do. What they also did not tell you is that the building inspector, when it is, has submitted to it a building permit. Has a process in this town of asking for a sign-off from the Board of Health. Before it issues its foundation permit. And what they failed to tell you is the building inspector did receive a sign-off from the Board of Health. For the issuance of this foundation permit. What they did not tell you is that if in fact you are going to get, if in fact. E, E H I R from the Board of Health applies, that the specific provision in the E H I R provides that. No well permits or disposal works construction permits shall be granted for any project subject to this regulation until the board has issued the environmental health. In uh, health permit. So in other words, the Board of Health did not hold up the issuance of the septic permit. The Board of Health did not hold up the issuance of the well permit. The Board of Health did issue a disposal work construction permit for this lot. So, although they would like to give you the impression. That the Board of Health has not acted or needs to act, that is utterly untrue. Now, it is true that they have asked the Board of Health to please, despite the fact of the issuance of those permits. And despite the fact of the denial of their appeal of those permit, to reconsider somehow those previous grants. And all of those things have not gone forward. And as much as Mr. Moore would like to say it's another agenda item for the future, that is just a statement to interpose further delay. Now. It, it, in, in. In this case, they have also raised the fact that there is what they called an open surface drain. Uh, I think that was one of the things that Mr. Dennis Murphy raised in, in the, but the, the so-called open surface drain, what they did not tell you. Is that the open surface drain is not on this fifty-three, uh, fifty-three Farm Road lot. It is on another portion of the property if it in fact is an open surface drain. And the open surface drain so-called is really an illegal. Uh, pipe that was installed by the town of Sherburne, that the town of Sherburne has agreed to remove. And of course, they did not tell you that, so this open surface drain, to the extent it is an open surface drain. Is not on this lot and is to be removed by the town of Sherburne. Now, Mr. Dennis Murphy has claimed that the, the permit is different from. Uh, fifty-three oh twenty-two, but what he did not tell you was that the requirement that was imposed by the building inspector. For issuance of this foundation permit was not the submission of the. Plans that were at the uh, at the Board of Health, but was a certified plot plan. And the certified plot plan was submitted with this building permit application. And I do not know whether or not the chairman has access to the certified plot plan. And if he could pull that up on the screen, it would be helpful, but if he doesn't, um, there is a certified plot plan. That was submitted in connection with this building permit application.
Hang on for just a moment, Jim. Um, Jeannie, I don't think that certified plot plan was in our package, was it?
Uh, it was not, um.
I'm not criticizing, I just, I just, if it wasn't in our package.
It was not, um, it was not part of anything that was presented, um, Chris might be able to um, pull it up.
Well, but, w- w- whatever, um, so, in, in short answer to your procedural question, Jim Murphy, nope, I don't have that, can't pull it up.
Okay, so that certified plot plan, which was requested by the building inspector, that certified plot plan matches exactly. Uh, the lot, excuse me, the fifty-three Farm Road lot, uh, that is uh, the plan fifty-three of twenty twenty-two. And that's the, that is the, that is the um, the, the, the lot. That is the foundation permit to which this applies. Now, again, uh, when you have uh, people who want to see whether or not they can interpose delay. What they do is they will, they will basically look at anything to see whether or not they can create the semblance of a, of a dispute. And in this case, it really falls woefully short. So, if in fact, the thing that is being talked about is the.
Jim, can I, Jim, can I just, I can hold you for just a half a second? So, if I, I've put, if I've done this correctly, I put lot two A back up on the screen here, it's down in the corner. And what you were saying about the plot plan is the plot plan matches this lot two A showed on this reported plan exactly? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, I, I was.
Okay, fine, great, just wanted to make sure I understood, okay.
Now, what Mr. Murphy was bringing to your attention is that the, the certified plot plan. And the, and lot fifty, fifty-three Farm Road shown on this A and R plan that you've helpfully brought forward. That there are some differences between that and the septic plan that was signed by Mr. Wang. Now, uh, we had the benefit of uh, an earlier hearing tonight. In which uh, the chair helpfully pointed out to me that although Mr. Wang might be very qualified as an engineer, he's not a surveyor. So, we obviously had.
Nothing personal, sorry, sir.
We, we obviously had the surveyor who had the certified plot plan, who happened to be Mr. Fleming in both circumstances. Put forward the lot upon which this foundation permit was sought to be issued. And if in fact there was, again, the willingness to be accurate in, in, in describing what had happened in the past. What you would have heard if somebody wanted to be fully transparent is that you would have understood that. When Mr. Wang prepared his plan. Um, that, that has been brought forward by and criticized by Mr. Dennis Murphy. That was a plan that was originally drawn, drawn on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. And at the time that that plan was drawn on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, we did not yet have. The well approved, we did not yet have the septic system approved. So naturally, on that plan that was originally drawn on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. It called the well a proposed well, because naturally, at that point, it had been just merely proposed. But subsequently, that well was in fact approved by the Board of Health and was drilled. And now was sufficiently okay for the Board of Health to sign off on the foundation permit. Additionally, when that plan by the Shang Wang was, was drawn in October twentieth of twenty twenty-one. We did not yet have the approval of the septic system. And when that was submitted, had they been fully transparent about it, they would have said, well, initially. Mark Oram from the Board of Health had comments about the location of the septic field. And because of that, there had to be slight changes to the Shang's plan. And in fact, if you, if you would, if you go back to the earlier iterations of that same plan. The Shang said, when he, after Mr. Mark Oram gave him comments that, okay. Because of that, we need a little bit further separation from the septic field. So we have to slightly change the outline of the lot to accommodate those concerns. And in fact, he made those changes. And the thing that he didn't do is he didn't, when he updated this plan on, on February fifteenth, he didn't strike out the old square footage of fifty thousand sixty-eight square foot and put in the, the proper, uh, the same amount that's on this, on the, um, on the certified plot plan and on the, on the A and R of fifty thousand one ninety-five. He made that mistake. He didn't make
Hey, Jim, Jim, excuse me. Um, Jeannie has that plot plan and can put it up. Do you want it put up or just want to keep going? Your, your choice. I'm just trying to.
Uh, yes, you can put that up. I think that would be helpful because I think that plan is a little clearer.
I'm going to stop sharing. Jeannie, you're in charge.
All right, let me try. Hold on. All right, Chair.
While she's doing that, Mr. Moore, you're
There it is.
Your little electronic hand is raised. Is that intended? Is that just the system saying something? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So as you can see here, on this is the certified plot plan that upon which, which is the basis for the grant of the foundation permit. And as you can see, that the building lot with that building line, it's exactly three oh seven point six, the same as that's on, on the recorded A and R. And Mr. Murphy made a, an issue that, oh, on the Shang's plan, that, that distance is three oh one point eight. So clearly they're different. But again, what he didn't tell you is that the Shang's plan, the three oh one point eight, that was based on the original drawing of this lot in October twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, in which there was a small change to that plan before it evolved into this plan. And it's true that on the Shang's old October twentieth, twenty-twenty-one plan, it has a slightly different distance because he didn't update it when this, the septic system was changed in this area on the right-hand side and moved out a little bit to increase the lot size from fifty oh six eight to fifty one ninety-five. But even with I telling you all these things, none of them really changes the essence of what exists in this case, which is the building inspector did his job. He verified that all the dimensional requirements were met. He verified that there was adequate water and septic for this house lot as planned and it was signed off by the Board of Health. There is nothing else that he needed to do or should have done. And notwithstanding any arrows that are shot by Chris Owen of the Planning Board that I don't want this approved, has nothing to do with it. The chairman of the Planning Board has no right whatsoever to tell the building inspector how to do his job. The chairman of the Planning Board has no right to tell this board how to do their job. The chairman of the Planning Board should know that once the second A and R was affirmatively, excuse me, constructively approved, that he had no right as a matter of law to challenge it any longer as a matter of law. So again, in each of these circumstances, this lot complies with its requirements. No evidence has been brought forward to contest its adequacy. As the chair knows and probably the rest of the board knows, the, the applicant has and will subsequently have the right to make lot line adjustments so long as they don't change the number of lots in the future, even though he doesn't intend to, but he has that right. And the fact that there is a claim difference of the, on the Dushang plan of fifty thousand oh sixty-eight to fifty thousand one ninety-five, all insignificant as it relates to the dimensional requirements and the approvals of the Board of Health for the well and the septic for this lot. I, I would again say, uh, on timing, and I would again say on thoroughness, the forty A section fifteen does impose greater requirements than just a mere notice of appeal. Forty A section fifteen does require that you specify the grounds for that appeal. It does not say that merely because Mr. Murphy, uh, Mr. Dennis Murphy comes in late, that he can't say anything. But he is confined within that thirty-day period to those things stated in that appeal. Had he wanted to, he could have supplemented those things within it. He did. It looks like to me, uh, to be fair, it looks like to me that the issues that Mr. Dennis Murphy raised as they related to the E H I R and as they related to, in particularly to the E H I R, that, that was something that was mentioned in the, in the Moores' uh, notice of the appeal that was filed with the town clerk. So those generally were, were raised. So I'm not saying there's not as if anything that he writes in support of his clients is impermissible. But what I am saying is that you are, if you make four points, you don't get the right to say, I want you to take, take it, uh, to not approve it based on five, six, and seven that were not included in the forty-eight fifteen notice filed with the town clerk. If there are other issues that I may have missed that were articulated by Mr. Dennis Murphy or Mr. Brian Moore, and you have questions that relate to those, I'm happy to respond to those as well. But I would ask that the Board summarily dismiss their appeal and, uh, and, and affirm the building inspector's, um, foundation permit issuance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dennis Murphy, I thought I heard you say at the beginning, um, we're just looking back that you thought the plan did not comply with the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And while you have that plot plan, uh, I could just point out a few things. Uh, it's on the screen.
Jeannie's got it up, so go ahead.
Yes, if you look, the front setback is listed as sixty-one point zero. You compare that to the plan of record, fifty-three, twenty-twenty-two, that same dimension is listed as sixty. These are not the same. They're not a mirror image. And my point is that if you're issuing a permit based on a plan that's inconsistent with the record plan, the permit can't stand. And particularly in this case, where it was, the A and R was constructively approved and is not likely to be changed. That is, yes, you can, in this state, the only state, by the way, that allows A and Rs, uh, record as many plans as you want and move the dimensions and so on. But you must get the endorsement of the Planning Board in order to do so. And that seems unlikely, given the memo they sent today. So, um, the, the plot plan that
I, I was only asking if, if the issue wasn't play. I wasn't asking for, 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 for the narrative.
Um, yes.
Right. Thank, thank you. Okay, so we've heard from the appellants. We've heard from, uh, the holder of the permit. Are there members of, Jeannie, can you stop sharing that screen for a second? Just so I can see more people. Mr. Kenny, I see your electronic hand up. Is that because you wish to be heard? Yes. Go ahead. You'll have to unmute.
Yes, I'm unmuted. There seems to be a, a, a big disconnect about what these plans are that I think is part of the problem here. An A and R plan does not speak to the location of a building on a lot. It's really not meant to do that. It's, it's meant to deal with lot lines. Sorry, my cat just came to visit. If you want to say hi. Um. So the A and R plan, generally speaking, and I've seen hundreds, if not thousands of them, um, usually gives you some sort of a building envelope, a rough box. It's usually a, you know, a rectangle of some size that shows we can put a building somewhere on this property. It has nothing to do with where the end, the actual building is going to get built. You're not calling out a dimension, uh, specifically for, uh, hardly anything related to the building because it, that's not what it's for. The same thing goes with, with the, 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 the septic plan. The Shang's plan was the septic design. It was the civil engineering plan for the groundwater. Uh, again, it's not related to where the building is going, except incidentally, it includes, it includes the best guess for where the building is going to go. Yep. The plot plan is the part that deals with where the building goes, and that's what is going to define uh, the zoning conformance for the building itself. Okay? So we have to make sure that we understand that these three plans exist in parallel, but they are not doing the same thing. They're not all, you know, uh, part of the same, uh, 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 requirements, you know, they, they're, they're all their own thing and they all have their own purpose. And so, um, there can be discrepancies between them that, um, don't impact the, uh, the validity of the plan. You know, the, the plot plan here is meant to show us where the building needs to go. The fact that it's showing a sixty-one foot setback, whereas the A and R plan showed a sixty-foot setback, it reflects the reality that buildings have overhangs. Okay? And so that's why obviously the, 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 uh, the engineer, the, the land surveyor moved the building back or the, the envelope back, uh, a foot so that he'd have enough room to have a roof overhang. Um, it doesn't mean that, that the A and R plan is suddenly invalid um, because it's different. Um, so as lo, as long as the lot lines and the, and the area of the lot are the same between the two plans, I'm good with it. And that's generally the way that we do it. So that's my two cents on the plans. Uh, if you have any other questions, I'm here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zoning Enforcement Officer. Um, okay. Uh, we've heard from, uh, the appellants. We've heard from the holder of the permit. Heard briefly from, uh, the zoning enforcement officer and his cat. Um, are there other members of the public who wish to, who wish to be heard on this, uh, building permit appeal? Jeannie, I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, um, board members, that puts it to us. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to go first because I think we'll find it's a surprisingly easy task. You know, believe me, but I think it is. Let's put the plan back up here. Okay. Everybody agrees that this plan was constructively approved. And Massachusetts law is inarguable in favor of Phoenix Partners that once the plan's been constructively approved, they can go ahead and record it. And they did. And that's fine. They can convey the lots on that plan. Although, as I think Mr. Dennis Murphy and Mr. James Murphy both cautioned everybody, you wouldn't want to be caught conveying a lot that you knew wasn't, wasn't buildable. But it's equally clear that the zoning status of lots shown on an A and R plan, whether it got an A and R endorsement by the Planning Board or not, has no bearing at all on the zoning compliance of the lots they're on. Unless the Planning Board is heads up and says, not a building lot, not a building lot, not a building lot. If they go ahead and approve it, all that it means is the plan goes on. Nothing more. There is absolutely no zoning attribute that comes with an A and R plan because they are under different statutes. A and Rs are under chapter forty-one. Well, the lawyers know the zoning is under chapter forty-eight. And in case there was any doubt, in nineteen sixty-eight, the, uh, Scripture Court made it incredibly clear. And they said, the Planning Board endorsement gave the lot no standing under the zoning bylaw. All of these lots could be completely illegal if they didn't meet, if they didn't meet our dimensional requirements. That was the case of Alley versus Building Inspector Danvers, three fifty-four Mass Six. It is frequently cited alongside its companion, eighty-one Sputter Road. Let's take a closer look at where lot, let's take a closer look at lot one A and lot two A. Lot two A, you're in yellow, is our, um, is the subject of our appeal. Lot one A is immediately next to it. You'll note that lot one A butts up against the neighbors. Can everybody see my screen, by the way? I hope. So there's no room to expand lot one A laterally this way. It has to be expanded this way. Let's take a look at the compliance of lot one A. Lot one A under our zoning bylaw is supposed to have a one hundred and fifty-foot lot width at the front lot line and a one hundred and fifty-foot lot width at the that back lot. So in this case, it's sixty feet back. So here's the one hundred and fifty-foot width here. And what you can barely see is that there's a two-foot wide strip. Then the lot drops down to fifty feet wide. Then it goes up here fifty-six feet, just enough to get back to the line where they're required to be a hundred and fifty feet wide. Then it goes out here and then another two feet this way and then back this way. The zoning enforcement officer has called this the tines, tines of a fork theory. Two questions about that. One, does our zoning bylaw allow that at all? And does our zoning bylaw and quote exception from planning board? Four point two says is that you have to have this one hundred and fifty-foot width continuously between the street line and the front setback line. So this whole box, it is part of lot two B, needs to be part of lot one A, just our two A, it's a part of two A, needs to be part of lot one A under section four point two. Yes, the Planning Board had the discretion to allow this extreme modification, which I do not think is consistent with four point two as passed by town meeting. They would have needed to authorize that by a so-called exception. Reading from the first asterisk on Schedule four point two, at no point between the required frontage and the building line shall lot width be reduced to less than fifty feet without an exception from the Planning Board. So the question is, can they do these kinds of a fork consistent with four point two? Does narrowing it down, going out and coming back in to, does that comply with our zoning bylaw? I assert that it does not. That this, that these incredibly artificial tines of a fork are not what town meeting had in mind and not what town meeting intended. Particularly when you zoom the plan back out and you see this entire plan is infected with that design. Here, here's the time of the fork here. Of what possible use could this sixty-five foot by two-foot strip be? It is just an engineering artifact. Nothing more. It is people trying to use computerated design to subvert zoning. Here's another one here. The problem is that if lot one A is illegal because of these tines of a fork, then lot two A is as well. Ironically, it's the same case. It's called infectious invalidity. Mr. Murphy has cited it before, as, as many good zoning lawyers do. It's essentially the zoning equivalent of you can't rob Peter to pay Paul. Um, and in this case, the lot width here has been taken from two A to pay one A. And you can't fix it on the other side because this is up against the neighbor. There's no way to give these people any more width. You'd have to take it from two A. And therefore, it seems to me that because, as, as in the Alley case, you took land from a complying lot to create a non-complying lot, they're both invalid. Mr. Murphy, I'm sure you'll have Mr. Murphy, I'm sure you'll have something to say about this, and we'll definitely get to you. But my concern is, once you imply infectious invalidity analysis to these tines of a fork. The only lot on this plan that survives is the ten acres at the back. Lot one A fails, lot two A fails, lot three, four, and five all fail. And therefore, what I suggest to the consideration of the board members is that. We need to reverse the issuance of the building permit because. Lot two A does not comply with the zoning bylaw, because lot one A does not. And that we would further. Advised the, the, the billing inspector that he not approve any more building permits on any lots that do not comply with their zoning but. That is my posit to our group. Mr. Murphy, you have something to say, and I'm sure the other board members have something to say, but Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, you have to recognize that uh, the applicant. Phoenix Farm Partners LLC owns sixteen acres of land.
Absolutely, and it's, and it's great land, good for them.
And that sixteen acres of land. Uh, include right now, if this lot is, uh, if this lot is conveyed. Will include the fifty-three farm road of fifty thousand one hundred and ninety-five feet. And it will include the existing house on the remaining fifteen and a half acres. And that house on the remaining fifteen and a half acres. Has more than enough frontage right now to support it. It has not only the frontage to fifty feet on the left closest to the moors. It has hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet. Along farm road that gives it its frontage. So it doesn't have to rely on the existing. Uh, attributes of its lot, it now has merged with all of the other fifteen acres that it has.
But, 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 but that's off the point, the point is, the question is, do these lots as drawn on this plan now?
No.
Are there, are they, yes, that, that, that is the point, because, you know, because you can always go back and redraw later, and I agree with you on that. But the point is, the plan that's in front of us is this one. And the permit that's been appealed is for this lot right here. If you get up through our morning and, and redraw the plan implying, it's a different lot, and I, I, there's tons of room here to do lots of things.
All I'm saying is that what you're suggesting is. That if in fact lot two A was, was conveyed. That lot one A. Which is the remaining land, or that the remaining land which concludes lot one A. Of the, of Phoenix Farm Partners would then. Uh, be a non-compliant lot, and that. Conclusion, as much as you're shaking your head, this time you're definitely wrong. Uh, is, is wrong. Lot one A complies, it does lot one A, the question is, does lot one A have? A hundred and fifty-foot of frontage, even if lot two, uh, lot two A is conveyed, and the answer is yes. Does, does that house at fifty-five Farm Road? Owned by Phoenix Farm Partners have fifty-foot, a hundred and fifty-foot of frontage, it does. It, it has, uh, even if you only include.
I'm, I'm not arguing that, but you're arguing things that are off the point. The point is whether or not you can separate your frontage. And your, uh, and your setback line width in this extreme manner and still comply with their zoning bylaw.
That, that.
Yes, that is the question, I know, I know it's got a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Only is only if, if in fact you said. That if in fact the only, if your point was that if in fact. The only frontage for uh, the existing house fifty-five Farm Road. Was the fork tines, and it was your position. That that was inconsistent with what the zoning act was. Even if I disagree with that, if that was your position, because that was the only frontage that that lot had. Then that would be a separate appealable issue, however, in this case. Lot one A. Is not. The, the land, the land other than two A that's owned by Phoenix Farm Pa- Fine Partners. Has more than adequate access, and if in fact. Later on, it no longer has that, then. At, at, at some other lot perhaps, but not at this lot, this lot is fine.
Mr. Murphy, you can feel free to argue to the land court that the alley case and the Spooner's Road case were wrongly decided. But they are very clear on this point. They're, they're explicit on this point, because it was exactly the same thing in Al.
No.
It was a, a, an experienced local developer bought two lots, cut off the back to create a complying lot. And by combining the two backs of them. But the problem is it left the front lot short. And that's exactly what they could, we could get criticized in, in eighty-one Spooner Road.
That was the only land they had, this lot is not short, this.
As shown, as shown on the plan. As shown on the plan, lot one A. Does not comply with our zoning bylaw, and because lot one A does not comply with our zoning bylaw, as shown on the plan, lot two A does not comply. That's, yeah, I'm sorry.
As you says, you said, the A and R does not do anything about. Uh, uh, compliance with, with uh, the, the zoning.
Zoning, one way or another, correct, it, it's, it's just a skew lot.
It's just, this is a drawing, and you could make, and I could record ten of these types of plans. And they don't do anything until you apply for a permit, and when you apply.
Yes, and when you applied for a permit, that made, that put lot two A in play. Which, because the lot one A that's next to it will be illegal when you get a permit for one A, two A is as well. If you want to come back in with a new plan which shows only two A. And, and lumps the rest of it together, you're right, it'll all be merged, it'll be fine. But the plan that we have in front of us on its face has a violation of four point two.
Tell me, tell me how it does not have sufficient minimum continuous frontage.
I'm not arguing it's minimum continuous frontage, it has, it's right here, hundred and fifty point two feet, it only is a hundred and fifty point oh. It's got enough frontage.
But, but, but the, the rest of the land has, meets all of the, all of the requirements.
You, 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 you're, you're not hearing me. It's the shape of lot one A that kills it. You're assuming that this idea that you can have a hundred and fifty feet.
You're assuming that lot one A is the only land owned.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm just looking at the planets in front of me, the, the, your guys drew this.
That's right, they did, they did draw that, but they, they have, they have, they have, they have not conveyed out all of those other.
I, I, I agree, I agree they haven't conveyed out those lots, but, but the problem is.
As they do, lot one A is not dependent upon the fork tines for its compliance.
Lot one A is, as drawn on the plan, is compared, absolutely is, as drawn on the plan, it is.
No, because lot one A is still, they're, they're, if they were separately owned. Potentially, you could make that argument, but they are not separately owned, so you.
That is not, Jim, that is not the way zoning works.
It is the way.
This, this, thi- this is the lot as shown on the plan, this is the lot as shown on the plan. You know, you guys, go ahead.
Rick, uh, could you at least be? Uh, a little bit more explicit about your reference to four point two?
Yes.
Um. There is language in the, the, the footnote about. Uh, at no point between required. Frontage and the building line. Shall lot width be reduced to less than fifty feet, uh, an exception from the planning board.
Right. And they, they probably don't need an exception here, because they do hold the fifty-feet foot width all the way along. But the, but, 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 but please let me finish, Jim, but please let me finish. The, the question, Jonathan, is whether or not this extreme fork time design. Is consistent with what the. Town meeting. Intended in saying a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and fifty feet, and then you can get narrow. Does this two feet here, two feet here elevate? Computerated design over substance? That's what I'm trying to say, if, if, if I. Maybe I'm bumbling it.
I think you could, if you ask the building inspector if it complies with, if it complies with the. A four point two, he would tell you that it does.
I, I agree, and that's why it was appealed, and that's why you have us.
And, 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 and if in fact what you're saying is that your complaint. Is not that this doesn't comply with four point two, because I think what you're saying is that. By its words, it complies with four point two, but your viewing that it doesn't reflect the intent. Of town meeting, which is an undiscernible intent, intent, as you know, because. It's an open town meeting in which it's not a legislative town meeting.
Jim, if you think the land court judge is going to agree that this complies, you're free to make that argument to the land court judge.
Well, what, what, what I'm saying. Is that you are, are acting as if the only land owned by Phoenix Partners. Is one A and two A, and that's not true.
No, no, you're, you're on the whole, you're on the whole thing, but the problem is.
Right, so that means that.
Two A, no, 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 two A. If one A. Here's, here's an example, maybe we'll help you understand. Let's say one A was only thirty-five feet wide here. Clear violation, okay, under the fifty feet, you never got an exception from the planning board. Two A would have a problem. Because there's no way to fix one A if you give a permit for two A.
Oh, there is a way to fix one A, which is to fix it on the other side of two A, and that's.
No, the, the, I mean, that, that. Say, saying we have other land and we'll draw a new plan later, um, doesn't cut it. If you want to draw the new plan, bring the new plan in.
You, you can draw, you can draw as many plans as you want.
You can, I, I agree, if, if your permit gets turned down tonight, you can. Have, have the engineers go out tomorrow morning, draw a plan that complies, and probably pull a good permit for that. This is a big lovely site, you're gonna be able to do lots of good things. I'm just saying the fork tines were too greedy.
Well, all I'm saying about the fork tines is that because of the additional land. That is owned by Phoenix Partners, it is not, it does not render its other land. Uh, does, that does not create an infectious invalidity, because. For it to create an infectious invalidity, two A has to render the rest. Of the land owned by Phoenix Partners invalid, and it doesn't, and that's the, what, that's what the case stands for. It does.
The case, the case, the case stands for lots drawn on a plan. That was the ruling of the case, and, and, you know, you can look it up, we, we can debate it, but, but that's why I looked up the case, I, I would like to hear from my other board members. I, I, I don't know how you feel about all of this, I think the one thing we've decided, we're gonna put aside the restriction.
Well, I, I agree with you on the, uh. The point of uh, infectious invalidity. A lot to a, uh, is. Uh, not a lawful lot because of the dimensions. Of lot one A. Uh, that, that, uh. The intrusion. Uh, to meet the. Building line, uh. With, uh. I think if we look at section four point two. Can ask, is, is that really what was intended in, in setting these dimensional requirements? And. As the zoning board of appeals. We do have to rule on legal questions as they arise. Uh, and. So land court says we're wrong, so be it, but, uh. Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would favor, uh. Limiting, uh, further, uh, back and forth debate on this. And putting it to a board vote, and I would. Personally be in favor of, uh. Granting the appellate appeal based on the illegality of the lot.
All right, thank you, um, this, Mr. Stefan, I want to hear from you, and then I know the building inspector has his hand up too.
Uh, I completely agree with, you know, your position on this, Rick, it's hard to believe. That the intent of the zoning, uh, bylaw would allow, you know, this kind of. This kind of, this kind of trick on the plan to, to somehow conform. With, with the words in four point two, it's just. So I, I agree entirely with you that, that that whole portion. Of, of the hundred and fifty feet back to the setback line must be included in the, in the one A.
Right, okay, um, miss, thank you, Mr. Mr. Kenny.
So, uh, I'll preface this by saying. I hate this plan, no offense to the people who drew it.
They were doing their job, it's fine, go ahead.
Doing their job. But. I have looked at this so many times, uh, it, it would make my head spin. But our bylaw is really, really. Pretty basic as far as its dimensional requirements. It doesn't have a lot of them, we don't, we don't spell out a whole lot of confusing language, we have, we have like five things that you have to meet. And this meets all of them, which is why I issued the permit, now, I, I agreed, I don't think this meets the intent of the bylaw, but the intent of the bylaw is not what's written in the bylaw. The, the, the language of the bylaw is, is pretty black and white. That i- if you meet these five things, you've got a conforming lot. Um, which is why we are where we are, um, it's why the permit was issued, and so I just want to sort of back up to, to. How we got to, 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 to this point, um, on paper, this meets everything. Um, I agree, I don't think this was the intent of, of the board, uh, or, or the town when, when they voted on it, but I don't know if it's intent. Is what we're supposed to be talking about, we're supposed to be talking about what the bylaw says.
Well, you, you're supposed to read the bylaw, I mean, and ultimately Jonathan Fitch is right, this will be up to a land court judge. You're supposed to really read the bylaw as a whole. And i- if a land court judge rules that the intent of town meeting as, as a whole was to let people. Create these little meaningless hundred-foot. Or forty-foot, two-foot-wide spurs into each other's property, and there's no design reason for it. Uh, at all, it, it's, it's terrible planning, um. And, uh, and, and, and particularly here, whereas here, um, they've got a lot of room. I, I mean, this is a, this is a big. Lovely site, um. It's, I, I don't know if it's high drive or what, um, but there's clearly a ton of room. To draw some complying lots here. And, uh, I'm not sure. What the design plan of the fork tines was, but they, they rendered the lots shown on the plan. Unbuildable under our zoning bylaw. And that's all we have to rule. Is that this appea- this building permit a- appeal should be upheld because. The lot in question is not a buildable lot under our zoning bylaw by reasonable and fix- infectious invalidity based on the lot next to it. And, and I agree, they can get up tomorrow morning and draw a different plan and commit, come in with it, and it's probably okay. But not this one. Mr. Murphy?
I, I just would ask you, I know that you cited Spooner, but Spooner, Spooner says. That the pro- principle of infectious invalidity is that a property owner may not create a valid building lot. By dividing it from another parcel rendered non-conforming by such division, it's not another lot, it's another parcel. So the other parcel is all of the other land owned by Phoenix.
This, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy, you are never going to. This, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy, you are never going to persuade me on this, you are welcome to take it to a land court judge. I, I think, I think your reading of the alley case and the Spooner Road case is fundamentally incorrect. I agree that you think my reading of it is fundamentally incorrect, Jonathan Fitch is right, that us trying to convince each other tonight is not value added.
Can, can you imagine some of the conflicts in the future? If someone wanted to put a fence on their property line? Two foot.
What would they do?
It, it's absurd, it is just totally absurd.
Right. Other comments from board members? Or the public, or anybody? See, the chat has spun something up. All right. Well, I've been making all the motions tonight, Jonathan, do you mind if, want to make one, or do you want me to do it?
Well, uh, I'll, I'll give it a shot, um. I don't have the applicant numbers in front of me. But I move that the, uh, Melon's application to vacate the building uh, permit issued by, uh, building department with respect to lot two A is, uh, shown on the plans in front of the, uh, CPA. That, that, uh, permit be, uh, vacated on the grounds that it, uh, lot two A is not a buildable lot uh, under our interpretation of section four point two of zoning bylaws.
Okay, um, can I make a friendly amendment to that? Uh, which is, I, I'd like to, and, and that we request that the building inspector not grant further building permits based on the work time interpretation of section four point two uh, until such time as that has been, uh, approved by a court.
I don't, I don't know that you can, you can do that, Rick, you can't, you can't make a decision on a case not before you, but.
Okay, fair, fair enough, no, fair enough, no, that, that, that's, that's fair, I, I withdraw the amendment, I, 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 I second Jonathan's motion, how's that for easier?
Thank you.
Um, further discussion amongst the board?
No, I have no further comments.
All right, um, moved and seconded to uphold the appeal of the building permit. Novak votes aye.
Stefan aye.
Fitch aye.
Okay. We will, we will write a decision. As always, our words are not final because the land court's always there, and the appeals court and the SJC, after that, it's fine. All right, do we have other business tonight, gee, oh no, we, we got another, we got another item. Yeah. All right, so do we want to take up the additional variance at um, Western Avenue, or do we want to try to move that ahead to another hearing, I don't, are the people from Western Avenue here tonight?
Yes, we are, Mr. Jim.
Yeah, let me get rid of this, sorry, thank you. Um, okay, uh, Deluskin's, great, yes. With the handsome dog before, I remember, uh, okay, um. Board members, how do we feel about taking this up? It's gonna take a little time.
Well, that was. Well, I think it's pretty straightforward for me.
Okay. Well, all right, so, um, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Luskin, um, are you represented by counsel?
No, we are not, our architect, um, is with us.
Great, and who's that?
That is Shelley Ziegelman.
Okay, Ms. Ziegelman, so you're gonna speak for the applicants?
No, the, the Luskins are going to speak, but I'm here to in support.
Ah, provide wise counsel, okay, fine. All right, um, all right, so, Luskins, please speak.
Sure, uh, we appreciate your, um, hearing this, uh, tonight, um, we are, uh, in a, um, kind of non-standard lot, and we are, um, very interested in, um, staying in Sherburne and aging in place, and one of the things that will make things a lot safer and a lot more, um, uh, workable for us is if we can put a two-car garage on, uh, where right now there's only a single car garage. And, uh, our neighbors are, uh, in support of this, as far as we know, we've spoken with them, and, uh, we're hoping that the, um, arrangement that we're proposing can be accepted.
I think a particular issue would be our neighbors, as you look at our triangular lot to the right-hand side. There is currently not a house there, um, there's a horse paddock and an indoor riding ring. Um, that's part of Willow Tree Farm, and so our neighbors on Ames Drive, excuse me, uh, Lee and Elaine Chertavian, um, would be the ones most impacted by this addition of a second garage. Um, and they've looked at our plans and are in favor of it, um.
Mr. and Mrs. Luskin, I, I'm very sorry, I really apologize, I have to ask you to start again. I had twelve screens open from the prior hearings, and in the process of trying to close them, I turned off the Zoom. Um, so I, it had inadvertently been away for a moment, I, I apologize if I was, uh,
No, that's all right.
A better electronic juggler, so, take it from the top, sorry.
With more brevity, anyway, um, we are, uh, very excited to be part of the Sherburne community and are very interested in remaining here for the rest of our days. And one of the shortcomings of the house as, uh, currently situated is that it has a one-car garage at a very steep angle. And we would like to be able to, um, go out a little bit more than, uh, the current zoning permits to put in a two-car garage. And that would be on the side of Willow Tree Farm, uh, owned by the, uh, Chertavians. They are supportive of our plan, currently there is a horse farm and a riding ring, uh, on the, uh, right-hand side as you look at the screen. And, um, we very much would like to be able to, uh, put in a two-car garage, which will help in, in many ways, uh, as, as we're moving forward as, as residents of this community.
Okay, um, and, and if I didn't boot the electronics this time, you should be able to see, um, your plan with some of my scribbles on it.
That's it, that's the one.
Right, okay, so, um, a concern from the board's standpoint is, of course, your proposed garage intrudes into zoning setbacks here and here, uh, and by the way, Ms. Ziegelman, I'm not a professional architect, I'm not even especially gifted with a scale, so these were, were rough approximations, um, but, um, you, you would seem to intrude into the setback area here and, and here. Um, and again, in my, in my just very crude way, it seemed to me there was room to do a larger garage which might very well be complying, um, but not need zoning relief, or not need, um, so go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but the, the triangular site causes a hardship. Um, the existing house falls off, it goes over the, uh, setbacks in three corners. There is no way to increase the size of the garage, uh, because if you draw the triangular setback from the triangular site, it, it goes over it in two directions, uh, by.
Right, but, but triangular sites are not unusual in that district is the problem. Lot, a lot of lot lines come in at angles on, on a lot of properties, so.
Right, but the.
On its own, that's not unusual.
I know, the current house, however, is non-conforming. And there's no way to, um, to add on to it in that area that does not intrude on the setbacks.
Hmm, well, that, that, it, what you've drawn, uh, and your design, uh, not only intrudes on the, uh, current zoning bylaws, but it extends into, uh, and beyond what was, is pre-existing there. I mean, for instance, uh, the existing house, uh, sets back fifty feet, and you're proposing forty-four feet as the, as the front setback.
Yes, just the corner of the garage, but the.
I mean, if you've heard, or the first item that we discussed this evening, uh, this is significantly more than the problem that existed in that project.
What, 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 what I think we could help you with, and what I tried to draw here in my uncrude way was if you recall from the earlier one, not extending any further into the setback area than you had before. Um, so if this is fifty point three feet here, this corner, um, and if I correctly measured fifty point three feet to here, uh, I think we could, gentlemen, under our one point four point six powers, say, well, we're essentially extending this wall a little bit, although this is actually is this, is this a porch?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
It's a roofed porch.
It's a covered porch, all right, so you actually extend into the area here. Ron, do you think there's room for them to be able to take it laterally off this? Maybe gain a little bit of a corner under one point four point six? Not any closer?
I don't know, that's.
Yeah, as you can tell, we tried very, very hard not to create new intrusions into the setback areas.
So is it the front setback, if I may ask, that you're most concerned with, because we're intruding on the side setback?
Yeah, it's actually both, it's actually both, yeah, i- i- if, if I understand your plan correctly, this area here, no, excuse me, this little tiny triangle here intrudes into the side setback.
Oh.
Right, the thirty feet, again, again, only if I've scaled it correctly, and when you do it as a professional, you'll probably find out I did it wrong. Um, and this area here intrudes into the front, but if we could this is a covered porch, um, and I'm just guessing, but if this is fifty, this is probably maybe forty-five or something like that. Again, you're the, the, the architect should get it even better, we might be able to say you could come over in here.
I think the challenge is to go twelve feet wider to add a second garage pushes us twelve feet closer to the setback that was only, you know, thirty-six feet to begin with. So the pivoting was meant to help, first of all, turn the garage so it's sideways, not facing front.
Right.
And aim it more closely to the curb cut that's already there.
Right, and, 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 and there's no magic to my scribbling, um, it might be that this, so for example, um, again, just sort of doing it. Let's say you can as of right come out along this line to here, if that's the thirty-foot spot, right? Mm-hmm. And you could then come across to here assuming that's the, I'm gonna call this forty-four, three, if this is forty-four, three, let's, 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 let's call this forty-five, then, uh, you could come across to here. Um, the reason I was trying to not pivot it was to try to give you as much width. But if you do pivot it, uh, you know, that, that's between you and your architect. But I, I guess when I say, we're, we're gonna try very, very hard to have you try to do something that fits within the, the envelope. And, and by, by the envelope, I mean thirty feet here and, uh, no closer than this porch here.
The, if I could interrupt for a second.
Please.
Can you see the setbacks, the red dashed line that runs through, it's covered by where the addition, the proposed garage is, but those are the setbacks that we thought we were dealing with that were given to us by the surveyor. So your thirty-foot setback is, is not in the same place, um.
Okay, so, so let's, well, just take a look, you're in the, uh, which this?
What the surveyor has drawn is much, it cuts off the corner of the existing.
Yeah.
Existing garage.
Rick, Rick.
The one car that's there.
Is this, is this zoning, uh, is this residential B?
Yes.
I think it's B up here.
The side yard is forty feet, not thirty feet.
Okay, all right, so that's, so that's probably why, that's, that's probably my error.
So, so if we, yeah, if we could follow the, the dashed red line that the surveyor has, has put upon the plan, that would be more accurate, showing that the entire house, um, the front porch, the upper left corner, and the corner of the garage fall outside the setbacks. The entire house is non-conforming except for the lower right corner. No, even the lower right corner is non-conforming.
Right, right.
So there's nothing, there is no garage that we could put on this lot as a, a two-car garage that would not.
No, no garage.
Yeah, no new garage, well, including the existing house itself is also encroaching, so.
Right, but, 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 but you already have that, so no, no one is making you take it down. Um, Ron, help me out here, um, where we've got a, a corner lot like this, you have two side yards and no rear yard, is that, is that the way we administer it?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I think that's where I got the thirty.
The existing non-conforming side yard, I believe, according to the chart on the drawings here, is thirty-six feet.
Right, thirty-six point eight.
That's the, that's where the existing, uh, corner of the house, that's how it's shown on the plan here.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and she's right, the red faded out in my copy, it's a little better in the, in the way they sent it to us. All right, so yeah, there is, um, all right, so I withdraw the suggestion that there's a good, easy way to stay within the setbacks or even.
So, so we know that we need to ask for relief because of the, the shape of the site and the positioning of the existing house in order to, for the Luskins to be able to age in place, um, and live in this community and make this house, you know, safer for them to stay there, we, um, we are going to, uh, encroach on the setbacks.
Note too, the topography shows a, a drift from sort of the left property line all the way down. Um, and where those dotted lines are closer, the black dotted lines, it's of course steeper, so.
Yeah, but, 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 but compared to all the other properties in town, yours is almost flat.
I'll accept that.
And I mean that the most supportive way possible, um, I, 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 I don't think there's a good case here for unusual topography. Um, unusual soils, probably not, I think it's, if I'm hearing you correctly, um, Ms. Ziegelman, you're you, you're resting your case on shape. It's not, I guess, the unusual.
Yes, and also the si- the size of the lot is smaller than, um, what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, it's not conforming.
It's not conforming.
It's very non-conforming.
Yeah.
Definitely non-conforming.
I, I looked it up, and the planning board approved it, um, at a time when we, when this was clearly in the two-acre zone, and they approved it. And that's all we know, and the house has been there long enough to be grand, to be grandfathered, so.
Yeah.
Nothing to know there.
Well, in the process of speaking to our neighbors, um, one person raised the point, who's a neighbor, that there's very little that we could do that. one person raised the point, who's a neighbor, that there's very little that we could do that would give us a second garage without making it still nonconforming. But that neighbor was, you know, supportive for the need to to grant relief, I think, is is the phrase that Ms. Ziegelman used. And I'm I'm happy to tell you who we've spoken with. If that's.
Relevant.
If that's relevant to to the decision.
No, I mean, having letters of support from your neighbors is nice, as as the earlier petition showed, that's something that usually happens to good people who will try to be good neighbors, which is always. But they're not required to do it. And if they really hated you, they could have come tonight and said so. And believe me, we've got some familiarity with that.
Oh, dear.
All too much. All right, so we would need to find here, gentlemen, under seven point two point four B. Circumstances relating to the soil conditions, no. Topography, probably not. Shape of the land or structures, which especially affect the particular land or structure, but not generally affect the zoning district. Well, this is the only tiny lot like this in that area. Jonathan, what are your feelings? I mean, I hate giving variances.
Yeah, I I don't personally see that a variance is justified. I'm not convinced that the topography is such that it's required for this purpose. And I think you've demonstrated, Mr. Chairman, that variance really isn't necessary. They can make some adjustments to this drawing. That would be.
Well, yeah, I I don't want to mislead you because it turns out I was wrong on this. If you see this line here, I'm trying to, it's very faint. See that? That's their zoning setback line, so that, so their available area to increase their existing garage is not, it's.
I wonder if it's possible to see the existing drawing without the proposal on it, because you'll see very clearly that the the garage corner as well as the porch already overhangs the setback, both closer toward Western Avenue and over to our right-hand neighbor.
Yes, and and that's what I'm trying to explain to John about what's wrong with my drawing. Because I I now have, unfortunately, only in this format, which isn't very useful for the rest of you to see. I might be able to scan it in. Jon Jonathan and and Ron, why don't you talk about it for a sec? Let me see if I can scan it in and get it up.
I I think I think what would be a little more useful, Rick, is if you were to put the the existing nonconforming setbacks on the existing plan.
Yep, and I I could do that just. We'll take a few moments for the magic. Hang on. I gotta dig it out of the file. Give me just a moment. Can't believe I've sort of learned how to do this. Okay. Just don't ask me to do it a second time, Ron.
Just has to work once.
Here's green. Bingo. Here. How's that? All right, so Jonathan, here are the correctly drawn lot lines, setbacks here. So really, they can't move their garage at all. This is their existing garage.
Right.
So the the hard part will be, is this really, is having a one-car garage a substantial hardship for zoning purposes?
Yes.
I don't have a garage at all, so you don't have my sympathy.
Our zoning laws will not permit permit me a garage either.
You've drawn poorly in terms of sympathy.
A little tough in the winter.
It it is, and 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 I'm I'm sympathetic too, because Peggy and I are also facing aging in place issues and and thinking about, you know, how many garage days and where we could go and things like that. We don't have any attached garages in our house, but we've got a lot of spaces, so. Okay. So where we were was the board members were talking about this. Jonathan, you were saying you weren't feeling really great about giving it.
Well, I I have to say that it would be difficult to justify all of the findings required under seven point two point four B. Specifically, that the circumstances related to the soil conditions, topography, or shape of the land or structures, which especially affect a particular land or structure, but do not generally affect the zoning in this district in which it is located, are such that circumstances would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And I I'm just not convinced that the approval of a garage that requires a variance is necessary to avoid substantial hardship.
I'm also a little worried about consistency with the other variances that we've declined to give. I mean, un- unlike earlier tonight, this doesn't have any hint of a scintilla of a whiff of you didn't tell us. Thank you so much for coming to us first and not building it and then coming for relief. You have no idea how grateful we are to have that happen, which is the way it's supposed to be done. And you can see what a difficult situation it becomes when people do it otherwise. Ron, where are you on this?
Well, it's basically what Jonathan said, you know, if you look to precedent of our other decisions regarding requests for variances, you know, we would, we would not approve this.
Right.
May I, may I?
You may. You may ask ten questions.
I I have been to many hearings in many different towns and this is the first I've encountered where it's a variance when you're a nonconforming lot, shape, when there's hardship from shape. And and it's usually a special permit that is the the application is for a special permit when you're going over a setback. And is there a history in Sherborne that that requires that it's a variance? I, someone wrote the zoning bylaws and it just, they seem very strict.
Well, I would say it it it's not so much history so much as what our zoning bylaw requires, because of course, i- i- if we're not allowed to give a special permit to do something, we can't. We can't make up our own special permits. And our zoning bylaw is is fairly old and as you heard, it doesn't have a whole lot of people giving it a whole lot of love, including me. We're just the administrators. We didn't write it. So I think it is more that it simply developed this way in Sherborne and mostly the lots are so relatively big. I mean, even this twenty-five thousand foot lot in a lot of towns would be a big lot. It's just that if you add the add the twenty-five thousand feet and the setbacks, that it gets difficult.
Yeah, it's a, it's an unbuildable lot, really, if you look at, if you were to have, if that nineteen seventies house was, if you were to build a house today in those setbacks, you'd have a very strange house.
Right, and 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 the real problem is, why the heck did the planning board approve that lot in nineteen fifty-nine?
That was my next question.
There is, there's, there is no basis. I I I looked at those plans. I looked it all up. And and ma'am, there is no reason for that to have been issued other than there was a lot of all heckism then in our town. This was probably for somebody's friend. All heck will prove it.
Well, it it makes, I, that is a hardship for the Luskens to have inherited.
Well, but they, yes, but but they they bought the lot that way and it was probably priced that way. And it's not like the road moved towards them. You know, if if the reason they didn't have space on the on the garage side was somebody moved a road. It was a variance granted. Ron, you were probably on the board. Is it, is it fifty, is it fifty-nine? Fifty-nine Mill Street up there at the corner of Nathan Hill Road, where the Sharp burner is? And they were just, well, they used to be a three point oh three acre lot in the three-acre zone. And then there was a nineteen sixty-one taking that knocked knocked it down to two point nine seven. And they got a variance because it wasn't their fault, their lot got, became too small. I just, I I I I appreciate the concern, but I'm not sure that substantial hardship. You can make a case, you can make a case for being in unusual shape, then you also have to make a case for unusual hardship. And having only a one-car garage, it it's it's not living on the streets. It may not be what you want.
It's moving down the driveway as is. Down, you know, four or five-foot drop in not very far of a distance. So we've done some skating for a couple of winters.
That's, I'm sure that's an aggravation. Well, Mr. Chair, I don't see any sound basis for allowing this variance.
Mr. Stefan?
Yeah, I agree. I I don't either. I mean, you know, it's a nonconforming lot with a nonconforming building relative to the current bylaws. However, you can build to the existing nonconforming setbacks.
Right.
But it doesn't look like you could fit a two-car garage.
Certainly not cool. Okay. Right, I mean, you might be, Ron, what you're saying is they might be able to continue this line here. In this area here, they might be able to say, well, wait. You know, th- this is a, this is a one point four point six extension of this setback here. You could probably get out to about here to do that. And you might be able to extend this one maybe this way a little bit along that same line, not getting any closer. But you're really not getting a much bigger space. You don't think.
You're not getting a two-car garage in that shape.
Right. No.
And it, they won't be able to age in place if the house isn't able to accommodate that.
Right, but I I don't think we have traditionally seen having a two-car garage as a, the absence of a two-car garage is as a substantial hardship. We said we have we didn't, didn't know, but two-thirds of the board members don't have a garage. So in terms of disposition, I I don't think you have the votes to get a variance. I don't see, although I hope you see, we are trying to work with you. A nonvariance solution here. Obviously, my drawn solution was idiocy and a waste of my time and yours, so I apologize. I was trying to come up with something. One thing you could do is withdraw the application. Then if Ron and Jonathan and I are all on the same airplane that goes down next week and three zoning board members come in that are just very real easy on variances, you can come in and reapply.
With my luck, you'd crash on our house.
Exactly. Remind me not to let Mr. Lusk make my travel arrangements. But seriously, it would give you a little bit more flexibility going forward. So I guess I would suggest that to Ms. Ziegelman. You can decide, you can help them decide if they want to do that or not. Or or we can just vote it down. You don't go to jail. It's not, you know.
So you don't really see something that can be done that would be less damaging other than kind of continuing the distance from the sideline and not coming closer to the street.
Yeah, and and as, right, and as Shelley and Ron are pointing out, that doesn't really get you much.
Right.
It doesn't get you a functional two-car garage.
Really, you know, for us, it's been the the safety aspect rather than the convenience aspect. Someday, we won't be in our sixties anymore and the, you know, not a level lot and having to kind of hoof it down the driveway was what we were aware of. So we were hoping, hoping to remedy that.
The 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 problem with substantial hardship standard, if you read the cases, is basically the variance is supposed to be the substitute for the town losing a taking claim. If by enforcing the zoning bylaw, you took my property, nothing can be done with it. So, for example, in the case of the three point oh three acre lot that suddenly became a two point nine acre lot because the town widened the road, if they did not get a building permit to put a house there, they were going to say, guess what town? You just bought a lot. Because your roadway widening rendered my lot unbuildable. That's what variances are really for. I I appreciate this lot is not the way you wish it to be. And and that the garage is not the way you wish it could be, but for rezoning purposes, it's not a substantial enough hardship. I think it's good to worry. I don't know where you are, Jonathan, but that's kind of where I come out, is that this this fails on substantial enough hardship.
I recommend that we withdraw this and that we don't take a vote.
There's, there's almost no downside to you for doing that.
You agree.
Okay.
For looking it over in such detail. Well, thanks for looking it over in such detail. And now we understand better.
Well, i- i- it's difficult, and, and you know, I, I, I appreciate how many people get turned around on this stuff, and, um, um, a lot of people's, um, architects and builders are not as responsible and as thoughtful as Shelley has been with you. They say, sure, you're gonna get a variance, of course. And then we have to be the bad guys to say that isn't what the zoning bylaws is. So I'm, I'm sorry, we can't help you, uh, I'd like to make a motion, members. I'd like to move that we accept um, the, uh, petitioners' request to withdraw this, uh, application. That's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Own favor, I, go back, votes I.
Stefan, I.
Mitch, I.
Okay. Well, again, I'm sorry I couldn't help you, thank you, thank you for your patience and listening to was probably an educational experience pre- previously.
So we, we, we certainly appreciate you holding the meeting, uh, a little bit later and, and, uh, speaking with us, so thank you very much.
I, I wish you could have come up with a better solution.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Alright, so now we have, uh, left uh, Peggy Novak, I know who she is, Jeanie Guthrie, I know who she is, Courtney Eck. Um, right, Jeanie, what else do we have that we didn't do?
Well, you had those minutes that I had sent you back in February that you haven't approved, but you can do that next time.
Yes.
Um, just pick a date for your continuance for fifty-whitney.
I'd like to bet fifty cents that they make another run at us. Um, but I hope not, um. Kenz, what works for you?
Um, how about, uh, May tenth?
It's okay with me, Jonathan.
I think that works, okay. Next, May tenth.
It's town election, but we wouldn't be at town hall anyhow, so it doesn't matter. Oh, maybe can you have a meeting on town election night?
Well, how, how about the eleventh as a fallback?
Okay.
Uh, wait. No, I've got an event on the eleventh.
Do you want me to double-check with the town clerk and then let you know?
Yeah, let's do that, so we can set up, we can set a meeting just by email, that's not a violation, so provisionally, May tenth.
Okay, I'll check with Jackie and find out. Since it's Zoom, it might not be a problem.
Alright, um, thank you all for your patience tonight, those were difficult matters for a variety of reasons.
Yeah. They were.
You handled yourself very well, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Not, 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 now I've got, now I've got a guy from the Department of Corrections out to tell me what could go wrong there.
Alright, everybody, hang up, go ahead and.
Alright, good night.
I'll see you later, bye.
Bye-bye.